All right, good morning, everybody. Apologies for the technical delay that we had this morning. Where is Kelly? Where is Kelly?
I'm sorry.
Hello, Kelly.
My apologies. We're going to have a little bit of feedback today, so we're going to try to control for that.
Okay, all right. But we're good to start?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, good morning. I am pleased to call to order the October 6, 2022, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners. And I'd like to ask Controller Sanchez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... certified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I am going to start this morning by alerting everybody that it is once again, once again, time to update our county comprehensive plan and to keep on the lookout for opportunities to share your thoughts with us. Led by our Planning Commission, we are starting to work on the next plan, which will be MOCO 2050, A Comprehensive Plan for a Changing World. Comprehensive plans must be updated every 10 years according to state law. Montgomery County is always growing and changing, and forces like sustainability, climate change, mobility demands, and our collective health during and after COVID-19 are shifting the way that county residents work, learn, and live. A comprehensive plan is a long-range plan for guiding the growth and physical development of a place. The county plan provides an overall land use and growth management framework for local municipal plans and provides guidance on issues that cross local boundaries, including highways, public transportation, flooding risks, trails, growth and redevelopment, housing needs, ecological systems, and economic growth, among other topics. Our goal is to make this multi-year planning process as inclusive, equitable, and transparent as possible. So while the county will be kicking off its full outreach process in 2023, we're taking some time now to start listening to what county residents have to say. The most crucial element in creating the MOCO 2050 plan is public input. We will be involving our citizens, businesses, nonprofit organizations, community leaders, and municipal officials. To begin this process, we are inviting everyone to join us on Monday, October 17, at 7:00 PM for the first MOCO 2050 Town Hall. Participants will be able to learn more about our work to formulate the plan and how you can give us input on what our planning priorities should be. We invite you to join us in person on October 17 here in the Commissioner's Boardroom, or we will have a virtual attendance option on Zoom. To register, you can visit www.mocopaa.org/2050, so 2-0-5-0, Town Hall. So mocoopa.org/2050TownHall. This link can also be found on our website calendar and is displayed on the screen. We look forward to kicking off the next planning process and hope that you can join us. And I'll turn over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Okay, good morning. I want to use my comments today to discuss the election process and respond generally to some of the public comments made by citizens over the past few meetings. I am not going to go down the rabbit hole to address conspiracy theories, disinformation, and outright falsehoods promoted by the big lie. But as a democracy, we all need to do a better job of understanding how our elections are run. The county's job is to administer and run elections, and we take that responsibility seriously. However, the election code and election laws are determined at the state level by the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the governor. Act 77 was passed in the General Assembly in 2019 in a bipartisan fashion. The state senate and house of representatives are controlled by Republican majorities. It was signed by a Democratic governor. Act 77 allowed for no-excuse mail-in voting for the first time in our state. Pennsylvania joined 26 other states in Washington, DC, in allowing no-excuse mail-in voting. Eight states conduct their elections entirely by mail. Act 77 went into effect in Pennsylvania for the 2020 primary, which took place during the COVID-19 pandemic. However, as I have stated, Act 77 was passed in 2019. It had nothing to do with the pandemic, which began in March 2020. It was not passed due to the pandemic and will not go away unless the General Assembly and governor change the law. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court has declared the law constitutional. Under state law, voters have the right to vote by mail-in ballot. There have been comments made regarding the use of drop boxes for mail-in ballots and urging the county not to use them. It is true that the use of drop boxes is determined by counties. They are a common practice in many other states that have had mail-in ballot voting longer than Pennsylvania. I support the use of drop boxes, and I will tell you why. There are unrealistic deadlines for applying for mail-in ballots from the state. If a voter waits until the last day, the US Postal Service simply cannot deliver a mail-in ballot by 8:00 PM on Election Day, when they must be received. Postmarks do not apply. It doesn't matter when you mail your ballot. If Voter Services does not have it by 8:00 PM on Election Day, it will not be counted. If you don't want to mail your ballot, you can drop it off at the Voter Services office. Drop boxes simply provide another option for voters to return their ballot directly to the county. Montgomery County is a very large county geographically. There are places where it can take up to an hour or more with traffic for a citizen to get to Voter Services in Norristown. Drop boxes simply allow voters to return their ballots directly to the county without using the US Postal Service. The drop boxes are under video surveillance, and the ballots are collected every day by county personnel, taken directly to the mail-in ballot center, and logged just like any ballot received in the mail. There are actually fewer people involved with handling a mail-in ballot returned to a drop box, and it allows voters to know their ballot is going directly to the county on the day they return it. If you support fewer people handling ballots and an electronic record of ballots being returned and the peace of mind of same-day delivery, you should be in favor of drop boxes. I support measures making voting more accessible and easier for citizens. I think Election Day should be a national holiday. In 2021, we made Election Day a county holiday for our employees. I believe that there are policies that other states use, like early voting, that can increase voter participation. There were citizens who, prior to Act 77, literally could not vote on Election Day. If you worked a 12-hour shift, but you were not traveling out of town, you were not eligible for an absentee ballot. There have been increased costs with mail-in ballot voting, and there have been growing pains administering elections with mail-in ballots. But it's our job to follow the law and fix any issues to ensure our citizens can participate in free, fair, and secure elections. I voted by mail in both the primary and general elections of 2020. I voted in person every election since. That's my personal choice, as it's every citizen's personal choice under the law to make their own determination on how they want to cast their ballot. As a county commissioner and Chair of the Election, Chair of the County Board of Elections, I will continue to uphold the law and work to ensure that every citizen's vote is counted, however they choose to vote. In conclusion, I want to thank our Voter Services office and the hundreds of citizens who serve and work as poll workers, tabulators, and watchers to ensure that we have free, fair, safe, and secure elections. And we'll be hearing more about the election process later, but for any information about voting and the election, you can go to our Voter Services website at www.mocopaa.org/voterservices.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on to public comment. Mr. Stein?
Yes, thank you. All speakers should sign to the meeting sheet available in the back of the room or virtually register in advance with Ms. Co. Francisco. All speakers must come to the podium if they are physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration.
Objection.
Would you care to state the nature of your objection?
Pick up, would you please, Mr. Stein, and slower.
Please state the nature of your objection.
Two things. One, general comment is not specific to what they're going to vote on, because we can't know that ahead of time. It's just applicable to the county. Second thing is, two minutes is not nearly long enough. It's not reasonable. How many people here would prefer a five-minute time limit? Please raise your hand.
Second.
Are you ready for the five-minute time, five-minute time limit?
Right, thank you. Your objection has been noted.
You need to listen to people. You work for us. We're not your employees. You work for us.
Thank you, Ms. Braccio.
I would like to second the objection raised by Ms. Braccio on the record.
That'll be noted. Thank you. Let's see. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration or which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Time limit, two minutes, will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The Board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The Board Chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including, but not limited to, yelling from the seats, arguing whether a matter is germane to county business. Yes, Ms. Braccio.
Actually, two and a half years ago, I did say to you that that is unconstitutional, because arguing with you is not arguing if we're just explaining why we feel it is applicable to the county. And that's all we really have to do. So arguing should be taken out.
Noted.
I second Ms. Braccio's objection.
As admitted, determination such or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and being required, pressed to sit down shall be grounds for removal from the meeting or muting without further admonishment or warning. Commissioners always welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedback at commissioners@mocopaa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right, we'll begin with public comment on matters appearing on today's agenda. Ms. Co. Francisco?
Sure, we'll start with folks in the room. So first, we have Pauline Braccio.
Good morning, Pauline Braccio, Townness Township. I would like to address the item on the agenda that Dr. Wang will be talking about. I believe he's going to be talking about the Bivalent vaccine. It's already been proven over and over and over again, and you're a doctor, so you know, you've got to know this, that the vaccine is actually very dangerous and it's not effective, because a vaccine is supposed to use, take it once, maybe twice, and that's it. But if you're getting booster after booster after booster, you are really defeating the purpose. I have so much, I can't possibly get into it all. But Dr. Wang, you are going to be standing up here lying to us about the new Bivalent vaccine, and it's a lie. And I have all the proof here. And anybody who wants to contact me and get this information, my email is pbraccio@live.com. And I'd be happy to forward all the information I have. So, Dr. Wang, you can either lie to us, you can tell us the truth, or you could just leave and say nothing, because I know that you're doing this under threat, because you will lose your job if you don't come up here and lie to us. And I just really, it's a shame that doctors are being put in that position, because all over the country, doctors are losing their license if they're not agreeing with the lie. So, Dr. Wang, I really urge you to please research this further and really look at the information that the CDC is even putting out. Theirs was set up to catch, to, for red flags. People dying from it should be stopped. When the SARS vaccine came out, 50 people died, and they stopped the vaccine and never brought it back. Now, there's been over, what, a couple hundred thousand people? There is a website that is called ICandDecide. And on that...
Ms. Braccio, your two minutes are up.
And you're not supposed to interrupt during the sentence, really. Let people finish their sentences. You're so rude.
All right, next, please.
Next, we have Jenny Reiman-Snyder.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm from Lower Providence Township. I don't have anything prepared for this segment. I just noticed on the agenda that there was going to be something regarding the public comments, and I assume that's addressing the time that we've all been asking to possibly have more of. So I just want to implore you to please seriously consider that, because I know personally, I take time off of work. I spend a lot of time going through what I want to say and editing it and practicing it, making sure it fits into two minutes. Well, a lot of us are here saying very heartfelt, important things that we need to be heard, and it's very, very difficult to fit it into two minutes. I recognize a lot of people want to speak, and there has to be some type of limit, but I really do think that two minutes is too short. Thank you.
Next, please.
So we have a few people online that have Agenda Item Comment. Kim Henderson? You can unmute.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kim Henderson. Thank you, Kelly. Kim Henderson, East Norrington. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Since we are not a democracy but a constitutional republic, we, the people, have the right to voice our concerns. Is my, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
We can.
Okay, okay. My time wasn't going, I'm sorry. We, the people, have the right to voice our concerns, ask questions, and ask for a dialogue. On Wednesday, September 28, at 6:00 PM, was the Town Hall meeting with regard to elections, where we, where we expected a dialogue and an opportunity to ask these questions. Commissioner Lawrence said at the beginning of the Town Hall that it would be an hour long. The Town Hall ended after only 30 minutes. At about, at exactly 14 minutes, 32 seconds, Sean, who said he was an operator, came on and asked me my name and where I was from. He proceeded to ask me what my question was going to be. I said to him, can I just ask my question on the call? Suddenly, he said, sure, hold the line. Then Sean proceeded to say she does not want to summarize her question, so be careful. I never did get to speak. Lastly, I would like to ask Commissioner Lawrence, if you would please explain to us what it is that you're referring to every time you say the big lie. We, the people, are very concerned about the election process. We are here to work as a team. We, we are also working to make sure there's safe, secure, fair, transparent elections. And I feel like when you use the narrative of the big lie, you're, you're putting some negative connotations on what the intentions are of the people. So I look forward to having an opportunity of a dialogue, and I hope in future Town Hall meetings, when there is a phone conversation, that all the people get a chance to ask their question. Thank you very much.
All right, next, we will have Gilda Kramer. You just can unmute yourself for Agenda Item Comment.
Thank you. I'm Gilda Kramer. I am a Commissioner in Lower Marion Township, and I am speaking solely on my behalf and not of my constituents, not on behalf of our entire board. Voting is a fundamental constitutional right of great priority to our shared constituents. Over the last two and a half years, I've spent countless hours helping our residents, Democrat, Publican, and Independent, be able to vote safely and securely, often by mail. We appreciate the convenience of securely and safely voting by having a drop box located at Luddington Library and a satellite office of Voter Services nearby on Montgomery Avenue. Voting by mail has been and continues to be an important public health initiative in light of the continuing prevalence of COVID-19. And I respectfully request that we continue to have a drop box at Luddington Library and also a satellite office with ours at the Magisterial District Court building on Montgomery Avenue in Norrbirth and Penn Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Kenneth Kristovich for Agenda Item Comment. If you want to unmute.
Good morning, Commissioner. Ms. Ken Kristovich here from East Norrington. Referring back to a topic that I discussed a couple of weeks ago, I'm still looking for any response from the county with regard to an arbitrary decision at administrative level to remove the right for, or citizens to pursue property records by name. It would seem to me that at least an administrative court judge or an actual legislator would have been required to block it. The second topic, this week, we're all aware that a elected road officer, county employee, is appearing in the uniform of his duties in a political campaign on fellow duty. And I'd appreciate a comment as to whether this is in the law for the commonwealth campaign or participates in such campaign activities while on the job of serving as a road officer in the uniform of his office and then appearing in the event. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have Adrian Seltzer. If you just want to unmute for Agenda Item Comment.
Hello, Adrian Seltzer, Wynwood. I would like to speak in favor of drop boxes. They make it very easy for people who are voting by mail to be sure that their ballot is going to get to Voter Services. Over the past couple of years, I've had mail that has not been received, has taken 10, 12 days to get there. The one time I did mail my ballot in, it took well over a week. And I'm in Wynwood, and Norristown is not that far. I think the drop boxes should start as soon as the, as soon as the ballots are mailed out, because we cannot trust the mail. And as a judge of elections, I can say that the process that we have in Montgomery County for voting is safe, secure, and people should not worry that their vote isn't counted. We work very hard. I've been working the polls for over 30 years. And seriously, if anybody has any questions of the public, I will answer them. And there is no better way to see how well the polls are handled as to become a poll worker. This way, you can learn the procedures. You can see how people are vetted when they come in to vote. These are, the poll workers are your neighbors. They know you. It is, it's just a very secure system. In fact, for mail-in ballots, you need even more ID than you do the voting carousel. So that's where we are. Thank you very much for your time and attention. Bye.
Okay. And next, we have Marlene Laska for Agenda Item Public Comment. You can unmute.
Okay, okay. Marlene Laska, and I'm from the Oaks Upper Providence precinct. This is in relation to the comments coming from Mr. Lawrence and want to also support what Kim Henderson, Henderson was saying also. Okay, relative to the big lie, prove it to us. Okay, that is all we're asking for. All we are asking is that you give us the proof, the data, the evidence that our elections are secure. We don't want to be just be told they are secure. Just like the last Adrian just said, they are the safest and most secure. Prove it to us. Prove to us that the voter rolls are adequate or, and accurate. Prove to us that you do not have people who have moved out of the state on the voter rolls, people who are, have passed on the voter rolls. Prove that to us. Show us the evidence. That is all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, for Agenda Item, we have Jamie Mogul. You can unmute.
Good morning. Thank you, Jamie Mogul, Lower Marion. I'm here to speak as to the upcoming elections as a community member, attorney, voting rights activist, election expert, but also as the current president of the League of Women Voters of Lower Marion in Norrbirth. And it's a pretty simple message to say thank you. Thank you to the county commissioners, but particularly the Voter Services staff led by Dory Sawyer. I am grateful to live in this county. The others, there are many others that do not work like ours to count every vote. That they do listen to the comments, as there are several times we have contacted, working with Barbara Malley and Dory and others, to say that things do need to change, and they have been responsive. So they are trying to count every vote under the law despite insurmountable obstacles that have nothing to do with county government choices. You know, these obstacles include having to run not one, but two election processes that by mail and Election Day, with a lack of resources and funding from the state, a changing legal landscape that has nothing to do with the county, and all while getting partisan attacks. This should not be a politicized process, and the only fraud in voter fraud is that there is voter fraud. It is very rare. We have a hard enough time just trying to get people to vote. So again, I want to commend Ms. Sawyer and the Voter Services staff that in this perfect storm of obstacles, they continue to work. We have a third of county admin that have retired or just resigned. And I want to say thank you for continuing to do such important work, including running the all-important satellite and drop boxes that we need. It's not rocket science. When we make voting accessible, more people vote. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have for Agenda Item Comment, Sarah Atkins. You can unmute.
Hi. My name is Sarah Atkins, and I live in Penwin, Pennsylvania, in Montgomery County. And I ask to speak about the fact that the drop boxes are an accessible way for people to vote. For those of us who are, you know, compromised and voting in person is dangerous right now, it allows us to still participate and our vote not to be stolen. My mail is inconsistent. There are days when it shows up, and there are days when it doesn't. So allowing us to have a drop box where I can physically drop it in a safe manner and then know that it gets to the county, I get an email that lets me know that it's been received, this makes me feel safe and secure. It is very open and available, and this is an important part of the voting process now. If possible, to have our drop boxes open as soon as those mail-in ballots come. Otherwise, sometimes they get left on the kitchen table, and you forget about it, and then you don't get it in in time. So it's really important to have those drop boxes open and ready to go as soon as people get those ballots so that they get them in. And I hope that the Luddington Library drop box will be open as soon as possible, as well as our satellites here in Lower Marion, which is another really important part of voting so that if there are any problems ahead of Election Day, those can be fixed, and people will have their vote and will not be disenfranchised. So thank you for all your hard work, and I hope the drop boxes will be open soon.
Thank you.
Okay. Continuing with Agenda Item Public Comment, we have Phyllis Rubin. You can unmute.
Hello. I just wanted to, I'll put my hand down. I just wanted to also comment about the drop boxes and, you know, f- I just wanted to also comment about the drop boxes and, you know, fair elections. I also live in the Lower Marion area in Montgomery County. I am an active committee person and I help my neighbors to vote. And I, similar to what the previous speaker just described, you know, there are definitely people who have very limited mobility or even are completely unable to leave their house without the help of others. And getting to the poll in person is not only a hardship, is an impossibility. So, you know, there needs to be another way for these people to vote. And we were, I feel just extremely fortunate in Pennsylvania that our state legislature passed a law that allowed anybody to vote by mail before we had the pandemic. Because many, you know, I don't know the exact number, I'm sure the commissioners know the number of how many people in Montgomery County voted by mail in 2020, but they're, you know, I was among them, people who are normally healthy, who were healthy and did not want to be exposed to a worldwide global pandemic, deadly disease. So these, you know, it's helpful and it's essential to democracy. There's, if anyone who's looks into it and looks at the ballot itself in Montgomery County, each ballot is connected to each individual, to one individual voter. There, you know, if I figured, well, I'm so smart, I could make 50 copies of the ballot that was mailed to me and then fill them all in and mail them all back, the only one that would be counted is the first one that was received. So, you know, there is security in the system.
Sorry, your two minutes are up.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. Okay, we have one other person for Agenda Comment, Suzanne Steponik. You can now unmute to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Okay, yes, first a brief comment about the drop boxes and the mail-in voting that everyone's talking about. Oh, first of all, I'm from Upper Southford Township. And so I believe that we've always had absentee balloting for people who have known issues, people that have spoken on here today who have significant physical problems can always do absentee balloting, you know, and that's always been the case. And I just think for most people who get to Walmart and go wherever else they want, they should be able to go to vote on Voting Day like we always have. So that's all I wanted to say about that.
Not one day of the year when you can get to Walmart.
Right, but if you want to go, you can get there and you will get there.
But anyway. If you're not speaking, please stay muted.
Thank you. So my main comment and my question, and I did submit a question to the board, is, you know, a lot of us are getting involved in poll watching and drop box watching and participating in many ways to try to assure that we have a voting integrity. And so one of the questions that I have, and I've always had for a couple of years now since we've done this, is do we have written procedures for the chain of custody procedures for drop boxes and mail-in voting? And people say that, you know, they take the ballots that were dropped in the boxes to the county and they bring them into the building. Well, then what happens to them? I'd like to see if we have something like that written up. I'm sure there are procedures for every single thing, and I think they should be made available to the public so that we might, you know, involve ourselves in observation of these things to make sure that nothing bad is happening anywhere along the stream. So that's all I really wanted to say.
Okay, we have one other Agenda Item Comment that I missed, Stan Cassasio. I'm sorry if I'm spelling or pronouncing that wrong.
Close enough.
Okay.
Thank you, Stan Cassasio from White Marsh. It's good to see you. I believe with, I believe what Mr. Lawrence said earlier, we should have a holiday for voting on here, and I know not like other countries do that. But what I'd like to say is, fair election is the most important aspect of a democracy. Without it, we fail that democracy. We've heard tonight comments from everybody here and online that there is concern, you go out and ask 60% of the people, they feel that they have it, that the elections are in question. So we know that it's on the public mind. The reality is that according to Pennsylvania Act Code, Section 1901, it says you must follow the state code and clear and clean voter registrations of invalid registrations. Last month, I brought in a list of 1,000 names, which I gave to the solicitor, that are on the voter rolls now that shouldn't be on there. I have another list of 1,000 and I will, I will continue to submit these lists. The fact is, is that we have on the voting rolls, I represent valid voters, whether they vote by mail or drop boxes or however they vote, the reality is having registrations, illegal registrations on the voter rolls elicits fraud in the voting system because they, I'm sure, got invitations to vote by mail. So what happens to those votes? New York, as stated the other day, has over 3 million people that are on the voter rolls that shouldn't be there. So I'm calling you today that we have pointed out that we, I represent, a number of organizations are auditing your voter registrations from Audit the Vote PA to a number of private groups. And upon completions of the elections on November 8th, we will use every remedy possible under the law to make sure that people's on, the people on these lists that shouldn't be on there, if they vote, we will hold those people responsible. I would like to point out, yes, everybody has the right to vote. Americans have the right to vote, but also Americans have the right not to vote. And the reality is they've got their head down trying to make a living and sometimes they can't do it. So thank you very much for allowing me, but I will present you, solicitor, with the additional list of 1,000 voters if I may approach you. Thank you.
Mr. Stein, if I could just ask a question. Is the list that you've been presented with in a form to include addresses and other identifying information that we could possibly check the voter rolls?
It has enough information that we can check against the list, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we're going to move to General Public Comment. So again, we'll start with folks in the.
I have an Agenda Item Comment. I signed up, I don't know why.
And your name, sir?
DeZeppe Craini Monticelli, G.I.U.S.E.P.P.E., Craini, C.R.I.N.Y., Monticelli, M.O.N.T.I.C.E.L.L.I. I want to speak about Dr. Wang's presentation here for the COVID bivalent boosters. You know, they have on the instructions for the pharmacist for these bivalent boosters, it says, "Report any immediate deaths that are within close proximity of the vaccination bivalent booster being completed." That's very suspicious to me if I look at the influenza and it doesn't state the same at all. So what that tells me is something's in these serums that are causing, you know, a more probability than the flu shot for people to go ahead and perish, to die. It's not good. And, you know, doctor, you're a emergency room doctor. Why, I mean, maybe we can ask Michael Lang to bring in someone from Holy Redeemer that's actually like an infectious disease doctor instead of an emergency room doctor to speak about this item because of course I know you're being threatened to speak about this possibly allegedly, you know, so, I mean, we might as well have someone in here that's really an expert. I want to speak about the Axon Enterprise for data storage, why we need more storage again. Is this the Axon dealing with the body cams? What's up with that? In terms of the public comment guidelines, I mean, yeah, we've always had that, but let's get that five minutes back. That's what I would say. And that be conclusion of my comments.
Okay, we will move on to General Public Comments, starting with folks in the room. So we'll go to, back in order with Pauline Braccio.
Pauline Braccio, Townes and Township. You talk about the big lie, Ken? Here you go. Democrats love mail-in voting because it allows them to cheat. That's it. That's the whole reason why they love it. Anything else they say about convenience or increased voter turnout is a lie. Mail-in balloting allows them to cheat and makes it easier to do it. That's why they want to make it the 2020, that's why they want to make the 2020 disaster the law of the land. Mail-in voting is so safe and secure that allows them to win every time. Now, I know there are people who come up here, one was Kevin Skoland, I really don't know how to pronounce his name, and he said he was an expert. Well, I do, I'm an expert. I've been working at the polls for five years. I've been judge of election. I fill in every time the judge hasn't been able to make it, which is about four or five times. The cheating isn't happening at the polls. The cheating is happening with the mail-in votes that come into the warehouse, okay? And then they are manipulated. And to have early voting for them to be fixed, well, that's even worse. If you get a mail-in ballot and you don't know how to fill it out, then don't get a mail-in ballot. If you can't follow the directions on the envelope and somebody in the county has to fix your ballot, you should not be voting, period. That's, that's the crux of it. And as far as, I saw you, Valerie, talking about abortion, because that's all Shapiro has is abortion. And Doug Mastriano was not banning all abortion. He's speaking his own.
Remember, your comments must be determined to issues before the commissioner.
She's the county commissioner. And by the way, I have case law that says even if, and you better stop this clock because I'm not going to be taking this time out of my time. Anyway, so I do have the right to speak about this. If you, you say real doctors against us, you're not a real doctor if you don't know where babies come from.
Ms. Braccio.
Did your husband carry your children?
Next we have Jenny Ruman Snyder.
Again, I'm from Lower Providence. Just giving you an update on my family situation. After 10 months of reaching out to various unresponsive.
Turn that mic up.
Please don't yell.
It's for the folks online. So if you could just, if you could just speak a little more loudly, it'd be great.
Can I get my time back?
Yeah. You can restart.
All right, I'll talk louder, sorry. So after 10 months of reaching out to various unresponsive Montgomery County officials, I was finally able to obtain a meeting with two employees from the Department of Aging regarding the atrocious treatment of my mother and our entire extended family under the guise of assistance. After an unnecessary and tremendous amount of effort, time, and legal fees incurred by me and my siblings, critical decisions regarding my mother's health have finally been restored to us. It's unconscionable that in the year 2022, in the United States, a human being can actually own another human being. The county can actually assign a complete stranger who is held to no standards and has no accountability to take over your life. They can then force you to pay this person, who in turn can force you into a facility and force you to pay for that. This is an extreme and destructive example of government overreach and it must change. Irreparable damage has been done, especially to the mental, physical, and emotional health of a senior citizen who is also disabled, namely my mother, and who on both counts, the system is purportedly in place to protect instead of harm. Once again, I'd like to remind the commissioners that you name all department heads, appoint all county employees, and determine their salaries. It is essential for the well-being of all Montgomery County citizens that a better review of agency policies and personnel trusted to follow such policies is implemented immediately. It's also essential that you reply to inquiries and requests within the 48 hours indicated in your automatic email response and not within 10 months after much pleading on my behalf. I'd like to remind everyone in this room that every county and state employee, whether elected, appointed, or hired, is at least in part paid for by our tax dollars and we have the absolute right to demand changes to detrimental policies and procedures. It's my mission to ensure that no other family has entire, another entire year of their life stolen from them by these policies. Thank you.
Next we have Mike Marino.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Marino. I'm a resident of Skippack Township. I represent and speak on behalf of the following groups: Americans of Italian Heritage Council, the Daughters and Sons of Italy, the MSS Lodge, the Holy Savior Club, and the Mount Carmel Lodge. I also speak for the Knights of Columbus. Ladies and gentlemen, we are here to request that you restore the Columbus Day holiday. We ask this because it is our day of recognition as a people of this county and this United States. We request this not because it is just another holiday. We ask this because it is a day of acknowledgement of our immigrant ancestors who came to this country for the purposes of a better life for themselves and their children. We ask this in recognition of the enormous contributions that have made to this country and to this county. We, as a people, believe that that is appropriate. In short, because it is our day, it is our day of justifiable pride. We are quick to announce that we fight, we have no quarrel or any argument or any animosity to any other group that has their own day. Quite to the contrary, we applaud it and support them. We suggest that this commission grant us our day back again. Now, if this county truly believes in being inclusive, if this county really believes in equality, then you will give us our day back. To do so is appropriate.
Marina, I apologize, but your time is up.
It is fair, it is just.
I'm weighing my time in favor of Mr. Marino, trying to keep it.
Unfortunately, we do not permit people to.
It is fair, it is just, and it's simply the right thing to do. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, next we have Al DiGennaro.
Good morning. My name is Al DiGennaro. I'm a Penn Valley resident in Lower Marion Township. I would just like to echo Mr. Marino's comments and request that you reconsider the decision to do away with the Columbus Holiday. I think as evidenced by the number of people in this room, I'd ask all of them to raise their hand and support this effort to restore the Columbus Holiday. As Mr. Marino said, we have no animosity. We encourage inclusion, no problem with the holidays that you've added to the calendar. But as President of the Americans of the Town Heritage Council, I would respectfully request that you do so. I would note of some significance that some of your sister counties, Berks County, Chester, Bucks County, and Delaware County, as my understanding, still have Columbus Holiday. And I think that that's the appropriate thing to do and would request that you reconsider that. And I would also note, I would applaud you for recognizing other people's heritage days. And I note on your calendar that you recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, and that's certainly appropriate. I think if my memory is correct, their month is September 15th to October 15th. And I would also ask that at your next meeting, you recognize that October is also Italian-American Heritage Month, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Next we have Mr. Craini Monticelli.
Mr. Craini Monticelli, Contra Hockenborough. My general public comment is going to be on the Election Town Hall. So I'm like, hot dog, this is going to be really good. You know, sit down for one whole hour. Well, you know, we have this lady on the phone, she's doing this poll stuff with us and she's like, okay, well, press one if you're going to be really into being a poll worker, then if you want to be a ballot canvasser, you know, or you're not into that, or you're really on the side, press two. We never got information back that took up. That's what I would like. And I'm going to second on making Columbus Day the holiday again. I mean, the surrounding counties have done it. Why not us? Is there some sort of discrimination against Italian-Americans here? You know? I don't know. That would be my conclusion of my comments, and God bless the homeless vets.
Next, we have Francis. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name.
Fracuti.
Fracuti. Thank you.
Good morning.
My name is Francis Fracuti, and I just want to let you know that as the legal counsel to the Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania, Sons and Daughters of Italy, and a member of the LAM Valley Forge Lodge since 1977, I was always very comfortable in the fact that we, the grandsons of Italian immigrants, were able to celebrate Columbus Day here in Montgomery County. Unfortunately, I was in Florida, and I learned upon a return that somehow or other, this had been eliminated by the county or taken off the calendar, and I could never understand why, because I was secure in the fact that the county was following the federal government who recognizes the legal Columbus Day second Monday in October. And I just want you to know that, Mr. Lawrence, good to see you here. I want you to know that Roy Campanella and Franco Harris were inducted into the Italian Hall of Fame long before they made the Pro Football Hall of Fame and the Baseball Hall of Fame. Joe Paterno, another great Italian-American, recruited Franco Harris and his brothers Giuseppe and Giovanni for Penn State. And Roy Campanella, of course, was raised in the Italian neighborhood of North Philadelphia and has always been a hero of mine because, you see, I'm old enough that I saw him play live in 1945 at the 44th and Parkside Park, 40th and Parkside Park, where the Philadelphia Stars played. We're inclusive. We want to be inclusive, and I just want to support the comments that were made by Mr. Marino and Mr. DiGennaro. The excuses used that Columbus was some kind of slave owner or killer, that's factually incorrect. And having previously testified before the Historical Commission of Philadelphia on the Columbus statue, I can assure you, we had a professor emeritus from Stanford University who spent 10 years reviewing Columbus's records. None of that existed. That's woke. Thank you.
Next, we have Michelle Melkor.
Michelle Meller with Payne Township. I come from a long line of Irish-Italian immigrants. My Irish side of the family, we were actually descendants of Commodore Barry. My grandmom used to ride in the parade with her grandmother because they were the matriarchs at the time. I'm here today because we are all so disgusted with the voter integrity in this country, specifically Pennsylvania. The United States has always been a beacon of light for the whole world. The whole world looks up to us because we held the standard. We no longer hold the standard. The world is completely distressed right now over the state of the United States and the corruption and how it's crumbling from the inside. The world knows what these drop boxes are about. The world knows what this, these, these... No questions asked mail-in ballots are about. The world knows why we don't require ID in America to vote, when in every other aspect, we're ID Nazis. You need ID to buy cigarettes. You need ID to get in certain grocery stores, but we don't need ID to vote? The world knows why we don't need that. We have, let's see, the Grant Administration, Boss Tweed, Nixon, and now we have Wolf, Shapiro, Lawrence, and Arkush, parts of this corrupt, corrupt, biggest history, you know, in America, corruption. You go home and you look at yourselves in the mirror. Are you proud of yourself? Guess what? I am extremely proud of my heritage. Your generations to come are going to hate you for the black mark that you're putting on their name, for being such a cog in this, in this... in this corruption wheel in Pennsylvania with the voter ID. Your generations are going to hate you for what you did to their name.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kevin Skoland.
Kevin Skoland, Lower Marion. I'm an election security expert. This is a photograph of a mail-in ballot drop box. It's maintained by Montgomery County. There are only a few of them, and they're placed in high-visibility areas. The one closest to my house is the public library. This one is in front of a police station. They have video surveillance. They're emptied regularly by county staff, and they have a good chain of custody. This is also a photograph of a mail-in ballot drop box. It is maintained by the U.S. Post Office. There are millions of them on random street corners across the entire country. They have no video surveillance. They do not go directly to the county, and they are slow. Both are drop boxes. This one is far more secure. Commissioner Gale was correct at the last meeting when he said that it was common sense that fewer hands on a ballot are more likely to ensure the ballot is casted and counted properly. If citizens oppose mail-in voting, that's fair, but your complaints belong in Harrisburg. As it stands, the commissioners are providing the most secure way to return mail-in ballots. Removing drop boxes doesn't end mail-in voting. It just makes it worse. And a voter returning several ballots is not stuffing the ballot box. Every ballot must be from a registered voter who specifically requested a mail-in ballot. The voter must provide ID when they register and when they request the ballot. The request is logged in the Sure system to prevent double voting. A ballot is sent out with a unique barcode to prevent double voting. Counterfeit ballots would not have the right barcode and would not be counted. It's unfortunate that so much disinformation is circulating, but I think those who have good information have an obligation to speak out. Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy Hyder. Kathy, are you here? Oh, okay. Okay, that's fine. We'll move on, and we can come back there. Cheyenne Hurst.
So my name's Cheyenne Hurst. I am currently living in Pottstown. My boss and I came here today for asking for help for funding for a company that we're starting, I guess. I don't know. She knows better than I do. But I wanted to say on my behalf, I've had many opportunities in my life. However, due to substance abuse, I had lost and missed the chance to better myself. Five years ago, I was convicted of a felony, which then made me lose my drive to want to change. In March, thanks to Judge O'Neill, I was accepted into Monco's drug court program. And I've been given the opportunity to work with Ms. Kathy, and I have been doing well. I believe that this should be available to other recovering addicts and felons to give them the drive, like it did for me, to be successful in life and be productive members of society as a whole. And that's it. Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
While we're waiting for Kathy, we'll go to, again, general public comment online. So we will go to Kim Henderson. You can unmute. Kim Henderson.
Hi. Yep, thanks, Kelly. Hi, Kim Henderson, East Norton Township. Okay, so Audit the Vote PA has identified over 242,000 registrations statewide who no longer live in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. They've identified registrations by running the September 5 Pennsylvania Voting Roles through the National Change of Address Service as required by Title 251901. Audit the Vote PA used the same full-service provider that Eric uses, which we are a member of. 15,119 of those 242,000 are currently registered in Montgomery County. We would like to, we would like to see remedy of the voter rolls updated. Ms. Dory Sawyer said at the town hall meeting in response to someone's question about voter roll maintenance that they are constantly maintained with information, I believe she said, from the row offices when people die and move. So I would like to, and I will be filing a right-to-know on what the process is for updating and maintaining the voter rolls. I also just wanted to address people who are saying about mailboxes being less secure than drop boxes. Mailboxes are protected by federal law, and crimes against mailboxes and the mail inside are investigated by postal inspections. Those convicted of destruction of either could spend up to three years in jail and be fined up to $250,000. If we knew that the Board of Elections Commissioners Voter Services was in fact following up on any of the concerns of multiple ballots being dropped in the mailbox, the drop boxes, we wouldn't be having these discussions. There have been numerous examples of people dropping multiple ballots, and we want that addressed.
We will go back to Adrian Seltzer for general comment. You can unmute.
For Kim, you can, someone can come by and drop 50 mail-in ballots into a mailbox. The fact that it is, but it is the law that you can only drop one in a drop box. The amount of misinformation being spewed here is just beyond me. An application for a mail-in ballot is not the same as a ballot. In order to get your ballot after you get the application, you have to provide your driver's license number or your ID number to be able to get that ballot. That ballot, when it comes to you, is in an envelope that has a barcode on it. That barcode goes after you fill out your ballot, put it in the two envelopes, seal it, sign it, date it, and send it back to Monco. It is scanned, and you have a guarantee that that person has voted. They cannot send in another ballot. Your claims about no voter ID in Pennsylvania, you need ID to register to vote. You don't get into the poll book unless you presented ID. To have to present ID again is superfluous. We have your signature, your date of birth in that poll book. So if someone comes in and says they're you, and you can look at them and that you see that they're not the right age, the signature doesn't match because when someone signs the poll book, the poll worker covers the other signature, so they can't copy it. And it's also upside down. So my time is up.
Your time is up.
Okay. We just have two other folks in person. So we have Nancy Price.
Hello, Nancy Price, Upper Marion. Thank you for letting me speak. Commissioner Lawrence, I, you are promoting, you know, a special, maybe even a day off for Election Day. Speaking of that, but in reality, you're promoting an election season, continuing all these mail-in ballots and drop boxes, et cetera. And also, I know Commissioner Gale, last meeting here, you spoke about with common sense, we would go to the root of the problem, going to state legislators. The root of the drop box problem is the commissioners, because the commissioners have the full authority to decide, to determine the number and where all of these drop boxes are. So I'm asking, again, I emailed you all the resolution that the Lancaster County Commissioners passed, the ballot drop box removal resolution, and I'm still requesting that we remove the drop boxes here in Montgomery County. You know, Ben Franklin said when asked, what type of government have you given us? A republic if you can keep it. And what's a republic? It's people working together for the common good. I get the sense in this meeting, I don't feel like we're all working together. It's sort of an adversarial atmosphere here. And I also, what is the common good? It's respect for every individual. It's also the well-being of the entire community and peace. So I think just looking at this election integrity situation, it crosses both aisles. People want to be sure that their vote is counted accurately. So then, like, back to Ben Franklin, you know, a republic if you can keep it. Are we doing a good job keeping it if we aren't securing our vote?
Ms. Price, I would like to clarify for the record. I stated at the last board meeting that I may pose to 50 days of no excuse, universal mail-in voting. I voted against purchasing mail-in ballot drop boxes, and the root of the problem is true. If you repeal Act 77 and do away with mail-in voting, we no longer need drop boxes. And again, for the record, I voted against purchasing mail-in ballot drop boxes.
I appreciate that, but you also...
Ma'am, sorry, your time is up.
Right, he took my time.
You were, you had stopped speaking.
Right, I was allowing silence for people to think, are we keeping our republic?
Cheyenne, I think, is going to read what Kathy was going to say. She's just refilling her meter.
Sure, totally understand. Totally. No problem. Take your time.
She said that she started a charity in Monco...
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you just say who you're speaking on behalf of?
Kathy Hyder? Hydel? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. And that's also for Pottstown as well. She was trying to make a kids' sports club for a difference in the Pottstown community. So much is needed there. She is working on rehabbing a home in Pottstown, and she has been hiring ex-felons and people struggling with drug addiction. Probably at least 15 recovery houses are there. And her program involves not just employing citizens who have a difficult time getting a job. Those jobs are usually sweat jobs and a low pay that are available to us. My, she says, my people are not just working with me, they are learning how to paint, build a... I'm sorry, I can't read her handwriting. Put up a drywall, a new lawn, and a new floor, how to estimate costs, do billing work, et cetera. One of the group's members, one of my coworkers, unfortunately had overdose two Mondays ago, and he was at the job and can't come back because... And we convinced him to go to rehab with another one of our guys. And she says, I believe they need a purposeful life. And then she talks about me saying that Cheyenne, I'm the only female on the crew, by the way, who she adores, told me that she wanted to go to school for art. She is about to get art therapy certified, so we are going to start an art therapy program for the children and veterans and those who live in the halfway houses. I've been funding all this from my account, and it was hacked, removing my funds, so now I desperately need funding. And that's what she had said.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
All right, thank you. We will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the September 15, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing then will move to a voted or any negative votes. Hearing then, motion carries.
Before we move on, Chairwoman Arkush, I'd like to take a moment to address members of the public that spoke during public comment.
Sure.
And that being the Columbus Day matter that's before Montgomery County. I totally agree with the constituents who have come here today in support of preserving Columbus Day. I was very outspoken against the decision of my colleagues to cancel Columbus Day as an observed county holiday. Unfortunately, this is just one example...
I will move to approve the September 15th, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing now will move to a voter, are any negative votes? Hearing then?
Before we move on, Chairwoman Harkush, I'd like to take a moment to address members of the public that spoke during public comment. And that being the Columbus Day matter that's before Montgomery County. I totally agree with the constituents who have come here today in support of preserving Columbus Day. I was very outspoken against the decision of my colleagues to cancel Columbus Day as an observed county holiday. Unfortunately, this is just one example of a cancel culture designed to erase our country's history. You see it here with the cancellation of Columbus Day as an official Montgomery County holiday. You see it in Philadelphia with the removal of the Frank Rizzo statue, who was the first and only Italian-American to hold the highest elected office in the city of Philadelphia. And you see it in various other matters across our nation. Columbus Day celebrates the greatest contributions of European immigrants to American society. And as such, it deserves to be observed and recognized. As a proud American of European descent, I look forward to proudly celebrating Columbus Day on Monday with other members of Montgomery County, many of which are here today. And I urge, I realize Monday is just around the corner, but moving forward in future years, that we should restore Columbus Day as a county holiday. Two years ago, this holiday was canceled and it was replaced with another holiday, which was Juneteenth. So if we're really worried about equity and diversity, we should have both holidays. We shouldn't cancel any holidays. And obviously, it means a lot to people in Montgomery County, particularly here in Norristown, the county seat, which has deep history of prominent Italian-Americans that made significant contributions to Montgomery County. And it's a slap in their face and their legacy. And it's important that that's restored, and it's the right thing to do.
I'm going to add an additional comment here. First, I just want to express my appreciation for all the individuals that came today to express their thoughts about the Columbus Day holiday and how much I appreciate, particularly here in Norristown, the contribution that Americans of Italian descent have made to this particular community in our county. I do want to make sure that we are speaking with the same facts. I want to be clear that the holiday applies only to county employees. It in no way impacts anyone else in this county or any other employer or anything along that line. I just want to make sure people understand that. Two, I do want to be clear that we did establish the Juneteenth holiday in 2020. That was a completely separate decision from the Columbus Day holiday. We actually added a holiday to our employees' holiday calendar with the addition of Juneteenth. Columbus Day was removed from that calendar for a variety of reasons. One of them was the fact that all of our 22 school districts, all but one, or two, I believe, are closed on Election Day, and all but one are open on Columbus Day. And so that creates a number of complications for our employees and their families. And I just want to underscore that for any county employees who wish to observe Columbus Day, they have personal days available to them, which can absolutely be used for this purpose. All right, we will move on to announcements and updates. So we are going to start with a very comprehensive election update from our head of elections, Dory Sawyer. Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, and good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this. I am hopeful that it will be helpful. So my name is Dory Sawyer. For those who don't know, I am the Director of Elections for Montgomery County. My department handles everything from voter registration to the actual logistics and operations of the election on Election Day. So we can go ahead and bump to the next slide when you're ready, Cal. So on our agenda, I do want to talk about voter registration, how voters can self-serve and check their voter registration online or by calling our office, some of the, an overview of how we do voter roll maintenance, what is required and what is entailed in that, some basics of how we do, what you can expect when you vote in person, an overview of what the hours are and how you can find your polling location, an overview of voting by mail, and an overview of our post-election process, and then wrap it up with how to contact us if you have any further questions or concerns. You can check your voter registration online, and I do think this is one of the most important things that every county resident can do or should do ahead of the election. So you can visit vote.pA.gov, or if you do not have internet access, you can call us at 610-278-3280. You can check your voter registration using the online portal powered by the Department of State. You can search for your voter registration two different ways, either by entering your name and date of birth and some basic demographic information, or you can search by using your driver's license or Penn dot state ID. When you enter that, the, either way, the system will match to your record and present you with your residential address and your mailing address if you have one. You'll want to make sure that this information is correct because we do assign you to your voting district and polling location based on your address. This is important to make sure that we give you the correct ballot and that you are assigned to the correct polling location. Your name does only appear in one poll book. Pennsylvania does not have voting centers. You do need to go to a specific polling location on Election Day. We do need to know where you live so that way we give you the correct ballot and are making sure that you are only voting for the offices that you are eligible for. If any of this information looks incorrect, you can click on the link, my handy laser pointer, oh, come back up one. Sorry, I have my handy laser pointer with me. You can click on the link, oh, it's not going to show on the TV. Borrowed it from the cat for nothing. You can click on the link right there, vote.pA.gov/register, and update your voter registration right there. And on our next slide, this does actually present as one giant screen, but I did break it up so that it would appear larger and easier to see in this format. It will show your voter record details. So my status right now is I am an active voter. That is not my actual date of birth, that is the year date that Montgomery County was incorporated. I do look pretty good for being born in 1784. Your party affiliation will appear there as well. So if your status for some reason there says inactive, you can get in touch with our office and we will tell you what you need to do to become active. If your status there says canceled, you will need to re-register to vote. People become inactive for a number of different reasons that we'll cover on a later slide. People also become canceled for a number of different reasons that we will cover on a later slide. It's important to note that no one in our voter registration system is ever deleted. We do preserve those records in perpetuity. It's important to, we have records going back many, 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 many decades. The note, the next line says, "Are you an annual mail-in or absentee voter?" I am, I do, I am on the mailing list to receive an absentee or mail-in application every single year. That's all that means is that I'm on the mailing list to receive an application every year. It's very helpful for me because I am here every day on Election Day. I do vote by mail. I have not filled out my application quite yet, so I do need to get that application in. I have until November 1st to get that application in. So that line of asking if I'm an annual mail-in or absentee voter, all that means is, am I going to get an application next February or not? Important to note that we do only mail once a year in February unless somebody calls and says, asks us to mail an application. We will absolutely mail an application out. And then that next line is how a voter would be able to tell if they are going to receive a ballot for the next election. Next slide. The next portion of this website will tell you what your voting districts are, so what county you're registered to vote in, what your precinct and municipality, your congressional district, senatorial and legislative districts, where you can find and how you can contact your county board of elections. And then again, you can click to find even more information if you click on that blue link there. That's pretty straightforward. So again, clicking on links in each of these sections will get you to more and more information. And then in the next section, it will show you your polling place. If you prefer to vote in person, it will show you where your polling location is. So this, for this example, the polling location is Skippack Elementary School. You can pop in your starting address there and get directions to it if you like. So very comprehensive, one-stop-shop portal. There's actually a little group of election directors that serve in a communications committee, and we all worked together to try to make this portal a little more user-friendly. So it is a little bit newer, so we're hoping that this does help answer a lot of questions and internet-savvy residents are able to find their voting information in a one-stop-shop. So super helpful portal, new and improved. But now on to some heavier topics such as voter roll maintenance. So as I mentioned on our town hall, voter roll, the voter rolls are updated continually. We do receive updates from residents every single day. People move, they change their name, they change their party affiliation, so we do receive those. Those requests are processed in a very timely manner. We do use the National Change of Address Database, which is powered by the United States Postal Service, as well as other databases through the Electronic Registration Information Center to match voter demographics. When we do find a mismatch, we, that begins a process where the voter is contacted by mail. Those letters can be forwarded, so if they have mail forwarding in place, they do still receive those letters. If the voter does not respond to that letter within a specific period of time, they would become inactive. That letter does include information pertaining to how they can update their information with us. So if the voter does not respond to us within 90 days of the next election, they become inactive. This process helps us find voters who have moved either within the county, within the state, or even out of state. This process is performed annually and is very helpful for us to identify voters who maybe have not told us that they moved. If a voter misses two consecutive elections where we have federal candidates on the ballot, their registration is also made inactive. Again, they're sent warning letters with instructions on how to become active or how to stay active with us. They just need to either sign that letter or get in touch with us, and their voter registration stays active. Voters with no activity on their record for more than five years, so that would be zero address updates, zero ballots cast, zero party affiliation changes, they just have had no interaction with our office for a period of five years, are also sent warning letters with instructions on how to stay active. If they don't respond to those for a further two years, then their voter registration is canceled. Next slide. Voters who are inactive are still able to vote. They must sign an affirmation. So if they are voting in person, the poll worker provides them with a form that they must fill out. It just kind of is, again, a legal document where they are signing, affirming that they live at that address, that they are who they say that they are. They sign that, they provide that to the poll worker. We then process those after the election. If they are voting by mail, that application does serve as the affirmation. If they are canceled, they must complete a brand-new registration. Deceased voters, I think I did actually skip over that bullet point. So we do work with the Department of Health, and we do receive updates on deceased voters through the Department of Health. Obviously, if a death certificate is noticed, is issued, that's how we are notified. Family members do also let us know when a family member has passed, and we do also look at community obituaries and then cross-reference with death certificates to keep our voter rolls up to date on passings. Deceased voters are not listed in the poll book, and once a voter is marked as deceased in our voter registration system, we cannot issue any absentee or mail-in ballots, any letters, all activity in that voter record is blocked. Voting in person, so when, on Election Day, November 8th, polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. ID is needed for first-time voters or for voters who just moved into a brand-new district. It is actually against the law for poll workers to require ID in any other circumstance. More information about the voting equipment that you can find in a polling location can be found on our website. We have instructional videos, including videos that show how the scanners work and how you can tell that the scanner has accepted and counted your ballot versus what happens if the scanner cannot accept your ballot. So we have three, four different videos on our website, kind of explaining how the different pieces of equipment work and how you can be confident that your vote was accepted. Voters who originally request an absentee or mail-in ballot and then choose to vote in person instead can surrender their absentee or mail-in ballot at their polling location. They do need to bring their ballot and the return envelope with them to hand into the poll worker. They'll sign a quick declaration affirming that that is what they intended to do, give that to the poll worker, then they'll be permitted to sign the poll book and vote on the equipment as normal. If they forget, if you had originally requested a mail-in ballot, the poll worker will have that information. So if you do not bring that ballot with you to exchange for an in-person ballot, you will only be permitted to vote using a provisional ballot. Again, more information about our voting equipment and sample ballots can be found on our website, and I'll share that web address at the end of the presentation. Who is at a polling location? We do get a lot of questions on Election Day about who the different groups of people are at polling locations. So we have poll workers. Poll workers can be elected. Some of them are elected, some of them are volunteers. They work inside of the polling location. There's usually five to seven inside of a polling location, and they work with the goal of conducting a fair election process and assisting voters in exercising their right to vote. We do also have poll watchers. Poll watchers are assigned to polling places by the parties or candidates to observe the election process. Poll watchers are a little more limited in what they have access to. That is also governed by the Department of State. Those guidelines are available for the public to view on vote.pA.gov as well. Anyone who is interested in becoming a poll watcher can contact their party to become a poll watcher or can reach out to a campaign directly if they'd like to be an observer on behalf of a candidate. Definitely welcome to review those guidelines on vote.pA.gov as well. Outside of a polling location, you will find party and candidate supporters. They may have materials for you campaigning on certain causes. They should not be blocking the entrance, but maybe handing out literature if you have questions, and they certainly may be able to assist you with information about a candidate or a cause that they are supporting. Poll workers, when you arrive at your polling location, poll workers have physical books with all of the names of the eligible voters in that district. There are lots of notes inside of the poll book to help guide poll workers as to what to do or to apply different aspects of the election code. So the poll book, for example, will have a note indicating that somebody is a first-time voter and needs to show ID. It will tell them if somebody has requested a mail-in ballot and must surrender it. It will also tell them if a voter is inactive and needs to sign that affirmation. So again, poll workers do know which voters were issued an absentee ballot and who should be surrendering one. The poll workers do also know which voters were, have already returned their ballot to voter services. Those names actually aren't printed in the poll book at all, so there is nothing for those voters to sign. Those names appear on a separate list. Just, again, another way to make sure that we are not enabling people to cast two ballots, and I will review that in more detail a little further in this presentation. The voter signs the poll book, the poll worker issues a ballot and a Sharpie pen. The voter then makes their selections on the ballot and inserts their ballot into the scanner. Again, the voter should be inserting the ballot into the scanner themselves. There is a poll worker there to assist just in case there's a jam or the voting machine alarms. They're there to assist or instruct you on how to insert that ballot, but they should not be handling your ballot unless you request them to. Like to talk about the machines now. So Sharpie pens are the recommended writing utensil for a number of reasons. Number one, the ink dries very quickly, so it doesn't smear. It doesn't leave a residue on the scanner, so the poll workers don't need to constantly be cleaning that scanner. It's very easy to read if a person decides to write in a candidate, very easy for us to read in that post-election process. We do format the ballots so that bleed-through is not an issue if you're filling in the oval on the front of the ballot, there isn't an oval on the back of the ballot that's going to line up. We format them specifically so that the ovals are offset. The voting equipment does not connect to the internet at any time, and all of our machines are tested for accuracy before they are deployed to a polling location. Both parties are invited to observe this process. If there is a problem with your ballot, the machine will alarm and it won't accept your ballot. We sometimes see this in polling locations where there's more than one precinct in a polling location. So for example, if you are Abington 1-1 and Abington 1-2, you guys are in the same high school gym, and you try to put your ballot, and you are an Abington 1-1 voter, and you try to put your ballot in Abington 1-2's machine, Abington 1-2's machine cannot read your ballot, so it's going to alarm and it will not accept it. I like to say that our voting equipment inside the polls are one-trick ponies. They only know how to read the Election Day ballot for that precinct. They cannot read the mail-in ballot, they cannot read the absentee ballot, they cannot read a provisional ballot. This is done for a number of different reasons, but they can only read the ballot that they are programmed to read, which is the Election Day ballot for that specific precinct. Voting by mail. Any voter who wishes to vote by mail or by absentee ballot must apply every calendar year. year. Again, this makes sure that we have the most current address on file. This makes sure that the person who's requesting it truly wants it every single year. They can apply for the ballot for just the primary, just the general election, or both. We only mail applications to voters who request them, either through that annual list, or if somebody calls me today and says, "Hey, Dory, mail me an application," we will gladly pop one in the mail to you. If a voter were to fill out multiple applications, they will still only receive one ballot. We will only approve one application, and they will only receive one ballot. Only one ballot will be counted. Applications are approved through the voter registration system, and they are tied to your voter profile. The absentee or mail-in ballot application does ask for either a driver's license number, state ID number, or the last four digits of a social security number. So if we're not able to verify the identity of a voter, we're not able to count their ballot. We are permitted to get in touch with a voter and let them know that we weren't able to verify their identity, and they have up until six days after the election to get back in touch with us to verify their identity. Those letters have already started to go out, so people are getting back in touch with us to confirm their identity. A lot of times, it happens if there's a mismatch, they filled out their mail-in ballot application, maybe without their middle initial, but their driver's license has their middle initial or vice versa, so there wasn't a perfect match, so we need to do a little further investigation before we're able to count their ballot. Ballots are mailed to voters with approved applications about three weeks ahead of the election. We're going to start having our mail-in ballots go out, starting at the end of this week. So voters who have received, who have approved mail-in ballot applications will start to receive their mail-in ballots, starting early to mid next week. Voters can return their ballots via the United States Postal Service, SecureBallot, Dropbox, or at one of our office locations. You can also come to our office to request a mail-in ballot in person. Here at One Montgomery Plaza, we do have the ability to fulfill those requests on demand. Just some statistics over the past, you know, few elections that we've been doing mail-in voting. Seventy to 75% of our ballots are returned to us by the United States Postal Service. 1% to 5% are returned in person at an office location, and 20% to 25% are returned by Dropbox. So the very vast majority are coming back to us from the post office, and we do have a really great relationship with both the regional director and our local postmasters, and they really do go above and beyond to prioritize election mail. Voters can visit our office here at One Montgomery Plaza on the sixth floor to register to vote up until October 24th. Apply for that absentee or mail-in ballot and receive it on demand. You can actually vote it here in our office and hand it right back to us. Again, office is right here in One Montgomery Plaza on the sixth floor. We're here Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. We're also going to be open on Saturday, October, I'm sorry, Sunday, October 23rd and Saturday, October 29th, from 11:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Voters can also return their ballots to our office in the Cumin Services Center. It makes sense, that's where the ballots are addressed to, so we do have people who occasionally arrive there live and in person and want to return their ballots to us there. We're available there Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. We will also be operating satellite offices, again, just to increase accessibility to our in-office services. Locations and dates are listed on that slide. We will have our full addresses on our website if they're not up already. So Lansdale and Pottstown, Lower Marion and Willow Grove on that Saturday and Sunday, right ahead of the cutoff for mail-in and absentee ballot applications. Returning ballots. Ballots, our drop boxes provide voters with a convenient way to return their ballot directly to Voter Services. This does cut out extra handling by the United States Postal Service or another type of Voters who choose to return their ballot to us by Dropbox must only return their own ballot unless they are acting as a designated agent for a person who is disabled under the Americans with Disabilities Act. There's a specific form that must be completed and returned with that voter's ballot. Please do not seal that form inside of the envelope, because we need that form to be able to open the ballot, so if it's inside, we can't open the ballot. Just to fix it to either the outside of the envelope or drop it inside the box, we'll still be able to pair them together. The designated agent form must be signed by both the voter and the person acting as the agent. A person may only act as the agent for persons living in the same household, and you can find those designated agent forms on both our website and vote.pA.gov. No matter how a person chooses to return their ballot, they must first seal the ballot in the secrecy envelope and then put it into the larger return envelope. So this is an example of the larger return envelope. So as you can see on that left side, we have a signature panel, so the voter who has completed that ballot must sign inside that box and then write the date. This is an example from the primary. You'll notice on the right, there's a barcode. Above that barcode is a unique correspondence number. I just wrote out unique correspondence number instead of giving away my unique correspondence When our system issues a ballot, it does assign a unique correspondence number, so those two numbers have to match. So when I scan that barcode, the correspondence number on the envelope needs to match the correspondence number that the system assigns to it. The voter registration number needs to match the voter registration number, that, like, all of these numbers have to work together. So the envelope contains the voter's voter registration number and their precinct code and a unique correspondence number. So all three of those numbers have to work together, and it needs to match. So where it says Sawyer-Dory, I check to make sure that the signature says Dory Sawyer, you know, that my husband didn't accidentally sign my envelope, that kind of thing. And we make sure that everything matches. Our system actually won't be able to, if that correspondence number was somehow fraudulent or belongs to another county, because we do sometimes get, people do put ballots belonging to other counties into our drop boxes. So if it didn't belong to us, our system won't let us accept it. Those ballots would then be stored separately until an attorney was, until Election Day, when an attorney is able to look at them to tell us what we should do with them, because we're not able to make counting decisions until Election Day. So those, all of these numbers all work together to help us make sure that we're only counting ballots that we issued. It also gives us tracking and visibility. This also is what updates the voter's profile, so this is how I know, this is how I would know that my vote or my ballot was returned. So Kelly, if we could hop to the next slide, this is kind of broken out. So when that ballot is returned to us, it is physically stamped with the date and time, so that way we know when it came back into our building. That unique identifier is read and matched to the voter's profile. That profile is then updated to indicate that their ballot was cast. If the voter provided their email address to us, the time that they applied for their mail-in ballot, they receive an email saying that their ballot was received. Either way, that tracking website is updated, so they are still able to go online and see that it was received. And this is also what powers removing them from the poll book, that places them on that separate list of voters for the poll workers. So all of these systems work together. The in-person, the poll workers also play a very important role in ensuring election integrity and making sure that people aren't able to cast two ballots. Again, all of these systems are tied together and work together. We can hop to the next slide. We then sort our ballots and store them securely in a locked room. In Montgomery County, we sort down to the precincts level. This makes it very easy for us to find a ballot if we need to pull a ballot, because if we are made aware that a voter has become deceased since their ballot was cast, we do actually physically go and pull that ballot. You need to have a method of organization. You can't just have 100,000 ballots in a room, kind of all in a former fashion that we can't organize. We do organize them by precinct level, and that does also make some of our later reporting a lot easier. Ballots that have incomplete voter declarations, we also store those separately from ballots that have complete voter declarations. Again, that helps us enable to begin canvassing those ballots right away on Election Day. We do notify voters that have incomplete voter declarations, that their ballot was received with an incomplete declaration, and provide them with an opportunity to come and complete their envelope. Ballots with incomplete voter declarations are reviewed by attorneys. They then determine if their ballot can or cannot be counted. Again, we do not make those decisions prior to Election Day. And again, as I mentioned earlier, ballots who are submitted by voters whose identity needs to be verified are also stored separately. We have to wait until 7:00 a.m. on Election Day to start the canvas. When I'm talking about a pre-canvas and a canvas, I'm referring to the process of actually removing the ballots from their envelopes and scanning them into the count. Pre-canvas refers to the time period when the polls are open, and the canvas refers to any time spent after polls close. It's really referring to the same action of opening the envelopes, removing the ballots, and scanning them. The number of ballots received determines how long the canvas will take. Our team, we're pretty consistently at about six, we can do about 6,000 ballots per hour. We can receive ballots up until 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. It does take some time for those ballots to come from the various points throughout the county back to our central scan center here in Norristown. We're usually done, you know, we work as quickly and as accurately as we can. We continue to post updates throughout the night and do our best to keep the public informed of how many ballots we've received and how many are yet left to count. All of that's posted on our website. Kelly, we can hop to the next slide. By state law, ballots are not permitted to be counted at the polling locations. Act 77, passed in October of 2019, specified that absentee and mail-in ballots had to be counted in a central facility instead of at the individual precincts. We had further legislation passed this past summer, just in July, that further specified that we must begin the pre-canvas at 7:00 a.m. on Election Day and continue uninterrupted until the process is complete. And we have to begin the canvas at 8:00 p.m. So there's really no, spoken very plainly in the law, continue uninterrupted until the process is complete. So we must begin at 7:00 a.m. and continue until the last eligible ballot is canvassed. Watchers chosen by the parties and candidates are permitted to observe the canvas. Not every ballot that is received is included in the count. If we're not sure if a ballot should or should not be counted, we do have lawyers on hand to review them. They make that final decision. If it is determined that we cannot count a voter's ballot for any reason, we do go back and update the voter's profile to indicate that their ballot was canceled. Then we're, the voter would then be able to go to their polling location to vote using a provisional ballot. Ballots that arrive late are time-stamped and then recorded in the voter registration system as being received late. They're preserved unopened and never counted. We do obviously need to account for every ballot that's in our possession. We do need to make sure that the number of people that we say voted by mail-in ballot, we have a ballot for, and it's included in the count. There is very, we do have to reconcile that the number of ballots that we say were counted matched the number of profiles that were updated in the same way that our poll workers need to verify that the number of signatures in their poll book matches the number of ballots that they receive at the end of the day. They reconcile based off of their numbered list of voters. Their numbered list of voters should match the number of signatures in their poll book, should match the number of voted ballots that they turn in to us at the end of the day. There's an equivalency between voting in person and voting by mail, just as there was with absentee ballots as well. Really, all mail-in voting did was expand the same process that there was for absentee. It just became larger. Post-election activities. We do have a team of tabulators. They are also Montgomery County voters. They're from both parties, so we have full-party representation. They're trained to reconcile the ballots that were cast in person. They also perform adjudication and calculate our write-in votes. This process can also be observed by poll watchers and authorized representatives. We do also perform audits after every election to make sure that our equipment performed the same way that it did in our pre-election testing. We are required by law to conduct audits after every election as well. Montgomery County has also participated in a pilot program for a second type of audit and have, we've done recounts in the past two elections that have all yielded the same results. Again, really just would like to thank the commissioners for your support, and obviously my fantastic team. I really do have a wonderful team, a very dedicated staff who work tirelessly, literally around the clock, to make all of these things happen. It's really, truly wonderful to work with the team that I have, and I can't thank them enough, and I can't sing their praises enough. It really is a fantastic team to have the privilege to work with. So if anybody would like to talk to any of my teammates, who are all rock stars and here to assist, you are welcome to contact us with any of your questions or concerns. We really do, we really do work to be as transparent as the law permits and as we can be. You can reach us at, you can visit our website at www.montco.pA.org/voter-services. We've put a ton of content on our website. Our election results website also goes into some deeper dives of all of this information, including provisional ballots, further information about voting in person, all of these things about how results are posted. We have an FAQ section that covers a lot of this information as well. Vote.pA.gov is another wonderful resource. We're working on some more videos that will be coming out shortly. If you'd like to be a poll worker, we'd love to hear from you. We do have some needs in Lower Potts Grove, Towamansin, the Salford areas, Franconia, so there are some pockets in the county that we are still kind of hurting for staffing in. You can reach out to us by phone, (610) 278-3280. Email montcovotes@montco.pA.org, or stop by our office and speak to us in person. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to present this. I appreciate it.
Sawyer, thank you. That was very comprehensive. I really hope that voters all across Montgomery County will watch this. I asked Ms. Francisco earlier today to make sure that this gets posted somewhere easily accessible, so someone can kind of get the soup to nuts of what you just presented.
Yeah, we'll be sure to drop this on our website in our little section on election processes, so.
And I just, I want to also be really clear about where I stand on drop boxes, because obviously I respect the time of the many, many people that have come to speak to us over these last couple months, and I want to be clear with folks where I am on this issue. As long as there is mail-in voting, I will support drop boxes, and I want to give you the reasons why. First of all, I was a commissioner long before we had the no-excuse mail-in voting, when we only had absentee voting. And just as a refresher, you could only get an absentee ballot if you were going to be out of town on Election Day, or you were physically unable to come to a poll. Those were the only two reasons. Being at work for a 12-hour shift was not a reason, an allowable reason under the law to get an absentee ballot. So it was not uncommon that the day after, in fact, often several days after election, the postal carriers would come with stacks of ballots that did not make it back to Voter Services by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. And so through no fault of their own, those voters were disenfranchised. We simply could not count their ballots, could not count their votes. And that problem arises because our current laws allow an individual to request a mail ballot, and this was true for absentee ballots as well, even before we had mail voting, up to one week before Election Day. So up to the Tuesday before Election Day, you could before, and you still can, request a mail ballot. Now, we can very likely get that to you when we mail it to you in time, but then you have to fill it out, and if you put it in a postal box to be mailed back to us, despite the good efforts of our postal workers who do try to prioritize this mail, it is unlikely that it is going to get back here in time. So from my perspective, these drop boxes are absolutely critical to ensure that voters are not disenfranchised. Secondly, I just want to underscore what Commissioner Lawrence has said and what Ms. Sawyer has said, and some of our public commenters said today. Drop boxes are under continuous surveillance. They are emptied every day by county employees, and those ballots are brought straight back to Voter Services. It is hard for me, and I say this respectfully, it is very hard for me to understand how individuals think that a U.S. postal box is more secure than that. I heard the commenter today who mentioned that if you commit a crime at a postal box, that it is a felony, and I agree, I understand that. There's just no way to know that that crime has been committed. U.S. postal boxes are U.S. postal boxes are not under surveillance. You could go to a postal box in the middle of the night, in the dark, in some remote corner in our county and put in as many fake ballots or ballots that you collected from people, there is literally no way for anyone to know that you did that. The most secure thing to do is to come and bring your ballot to a drop box, which is continuously monitored, and those ballots come straight back to Voter Services every single day. So as long as there's mail-in voting, I will always be for drop boxes. And I do want to just add one comment about mail-in voting. I worked in a hospital for a little over 20 years. Most hospital workers work a 12-hour shift. They work 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., but they don't walk out the door at 7:00 p.m. There's sign-offs and other things that have to happen. So hospital workers tend to walk out the door more like 7:30 or quarter to 8:00. Unless you live very close to your polling place, those workers just simply couldn't vote. It's, the same holds true for police officers, for EMT workers, for any factory worker that works a 12-hour shift in one of our manufacturing facilities. There were voters all across this county and this Commonwealth that were disenfranchised because they worked a 12-hour shift. I don't know how that protects our republic in any way, shape, or form. I agree with you that our republic depends upon people being able to vote, and our job as commissioners and in our state law, we are supposed to make it as easy as possible for eligible voters to vote. So I support mail voting for these reasons because I think it strengthens our democracy. It gives every eligible voter the opportunity to vote and not have to take a day off work, which many of our workers in this county don't have paid days off. So you cannot ask somebody to forego a day's pay for their, to exercise their right to vote. So for these reasons, I will support drop boxes as long as we have mail voting, and I will support mail voting. Thank you.
Dory, thank you for the presentation. Just one question, which I know the answer to, but I just want you to get it out there. With regards to the voter registration rolls, who governs that? Do we decide when we can take voters off or what that, that very detailed slide you went through?
Yes, so it is. We, if a voter writes to us, like if a voter, if I go downstairs and I open the mail and there's a cancellation form in there today, signed by a voter saying, "I moved to Florida, here's a cancellation form," we can process that today. I cannot actively seek out through NCOA or through any other database right now in the period of time as close to we are as the election. I cannot do that today.
But the steps that you went through?
Oh, the steps that I went through. When we can make those changes, yes, it's all through the election code. Yes.
I just have a couple of questions related to inactive voter status as well.
Yes.
The poll book?
Yes.
Has it flagged if someone is a five-year inactive voter?
They would just be listed as inactive, so it doesn't specify why, it just says inactive.
But it says that they're inactive?
Yes, yes.
And then if that person decides, if they want to vote, obviously they're showing up?
Correct.
Do they have to show an ID?
No, there's a form.
And are they given a provisional ballot or a regular ballot?
A regular ballot. As long as they are comfortable completing that form, they are permitted to vote on a regular ballot.
And even if they're five years inactive, is their signature still on file in that poll?
Their signature is still on file in that poll book.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Hi, well, Ms. Sawyer, I just want to thank you and your whole team. I know this is incredibly busy time of year for all of you, and I appreciate the time that you spent here today. And I do want to encourage our residents to reach out in the, in the ways that have been shown today to get your questions answered, take some time to watch these videos, understand the process. I hope that this has been reassuring for people. There is an enormous amount of process and accountability around voting to protect the integrity of our votes. And the fact that we now have voter-marked paper ballots allows us to actually conduct completely valid audits after the election. You know, before, before we had these voter-marked paper ballots, at the end of the day, a, the machines would be shut down and they would print out the same thing that looks like a cash register receipt. And all it had on it was there were, you know, X number of votes for this candidate and X number of votes for that candidate. And that was it. There was no way we could audit that other than to re-add up the totals. Now, we can go back and there, and I know we're not going to go into today, but there are statistical audits being done, there are risk-limiting audits being done, where actual ballots marked by voters in this county are recounted.
Yeah, I mean, just-
It just doesn't get any more secure than this.
Just that, I mean, the recounts that we've done where we actually take the hand-marked paper ballots and run them through different equipment and produce, you know, the results don't change. We still have the same candidates winning, we still have the same things happening, we're still able to report the same results. Even running the same ballots through different equipment is really proof that the system works and that our teams are administering elections in a very safe and secure way.
Absolutely. So I can say with confidence that since I've been a commissioner since 2015, we have never had more secure elections and that we can actually show that with real audits of real ballots filled out by real voters. So thank you so much, and I look forward to a smooth election over these next couple of months.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. Welcome, Nellie Jimenez. Before I invite you to share your comments with us, I do want to just make, take the moment to acknowledge that this is National Hispanic Heritage Month, which began September 15th and continues through October 15th. This month, we recognize the contributions of the nearly 6% of our county residents who identify as Hispanic. American history and our county history has been enriched by and benefited from Hispanic writers, scientists, soldiers, doctors, entrepreneurs, academics, and leaders in labor and government. During National Hispanic Heritage Month, we reaffirm that diversity is absolutely one of our county's biggest strengths, and we acknowledge the leaders who've helped the county implement the programs and services to continue to serve this growing segment of our community. So just want to welcome Nellie and also acknowledge that part of our county's commitment is supporting an equitable recovery from the pandemic. Our recovery plan includes projects that will invest in historically underserved communities, including our Hispanic community. And I believe in total, we have allocated more than $6.3 million across multiple programs to organize, organizations that serve our Latino and Hispanic communities. One specific focus area is to provide facilities to house critical services and gathering spaces. Our recovery plan supports a new site for Aklamo, which I suspect we might hear a little bit about today. And with that, I'm proud to welcome Nellie Jimenez, the CEO of Aklamo, to join us today.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me today. Buenas tardes. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. And I always said, yeah, Hispanic Heritage Month is to celebrate the different contributions of Hispanics, but it should be also an opportunity for those who are not Hispanic to learn more about our culture and about who we are and not only celebrate the food, which is very popular in the United States, but also, like you said, Dr. Arco, our contributions on the economic, culture, so many businesses, Latinos are well-known to open businesses and you can have, you can go into Marshall Street and you can see a lot of Latino business on, and I want to celebrate them because they make sacrifices every day to bring millions of dollars to the county. And you can see also a growth of Latino businesses now in Posttown and now opening in Lansdale. And those are, you know, contributions that the Latino community brings. This year, Hispanic Heritage Month national theme is Unidos, is inclusivity for a stronger nation. Next, thank you. So I represent Aklamo, and we are the only full social services organization that serves Latinos and also other minority communities. We have been in existence for 45 years, and it was created by a group of amazing leaders who came together and decided, you know what, there is no one serving the Latino community, the growing Latino community, and they got together and they formed the organization. And it has been my honor in the last seven and a half years to be able to take Aklamo where it is right now. We provide services through health, education, and social services. We have been able to work with different partners all around the county to make sure that not only the Latinos, but other communities and other minority communities work together to make our county stronger. Next. So this is a little bit about us. I'm not going to read this slide because we don't have much time, but I wanted to show you a little bit about our mission and our vision, and the most important thing is for us that every family, every child, and every adult, we want them to reach their full potential, independence and happiness. And that's our vision, that's what we want to see. Next. And this is a little bit of our impact. Again, I'm not going to read this slide, but this is a little bit of our impact. As soon as the pandemic started, we went into working with our communities. We were out there, we were distributing food, we were providing services. And then Ida hit, and it hasn't been easy, I'm going to tell you, in the last two and a half years, but we have been in the front, fighting every step of the way with everybody in our community. Next. Then, these are other numbers. This is our team doing a lot of the vaccination, not only with COVID, we did also testing. We also, you know, help people understand the impact of the vaccine, but also, you know, with flu and other vaccinations. So we work with seniors, we work with children, and we make sure that parents and adults are educated on their choices that they can make. Next. This is also other numbers, and we are very proud also about our specific emergency rental and utility assistance program that we have been running, helping to make sure that those who are more vulnerable in our community have been, that have been impacted by COVID, receive the support and the services that they need so they can stay home, so avoid, you know, avoiding that they become homeless and that we have, you know, support from the community, knowing that we're going to be there for them through these terrible times. Next. And this is, like you mentioned, Dr. Arco, this is, you know, the Montgomery adopted the final recovery plan on August 2022. It looks like it was very easy, Montgomery County Recovery Office, I want to give them a shout-out because they were so careful when they went through the plan, they came to our communities, we, they went to talk to different communities of minority communities all around the county to talk to all of us, and then we had to go through a rigorous, you know, process of applying, and I was very nervous, and I was like, oh my God. In the meantime, we were trying to locate a place because, as you can see, the community have grown in the last years, and we wanted to make sure that we could have spaces where people can feel welcome, can feel proud. And part of what our strategic planning included was to really, you know, find another location within our core area in Norristown to make sure that people have those facilities to come together for services. But also remember, we serve children and children are our future, so we wanted to make sure that those children have good places, safe places to go after school, at nighttime, during the summer, so they can learn while they are in our care. Next. So this is the building that we were able to secure with our ARPA money, so we are very happy. We have been working with the Calvary Church, and I also want to give them a shout-out because it has been such an amazing and lovely experience to work with them. We told them we are not going to change the exterior of the church, we're going to keep it as it is. We also actually developed like a little museum about the history. If you know that building, it's been in existence pieces by pieces for the last 150 years, and it's part of the history of Norristown, and now Aklamo is going to be the gatekeeper for that history. So once we open officially, you guys can come and see, you know, the history of the church and what they have done. Within that church, there is an early learning center that serves mostly Latino and Black children in our community, and we're going to preserve that so our families can keep working and keep doing what they need to do to help their families. Next. This is information about us, our beautiful kids, that, that's in the zoo. If you recognize the zoo, we work with them, and we take the kids and just to be kids and to learn about science and, you know, just make sure that their social, emotional well-being is also taken care of. I want to thank, you know, the commissioners, also the staff in Montgomery County and everybody in Montgomery County, Health Department, all of our support, our partners for this opportunity, and thanks for having me today, and happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Nellie, thank you so much, and thank you for your partnership. And you left out the whole, all the work you did during the census, which was happening as COVID hit. Aklamo was so helpful under your leadership in making sure that our residents understood what the census takers were coming to do, that their information was secure. All those pieces were so critical. So thank you for your partnership in multiple different ways, and we're just so grateful to have you a part of the community.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Nellie, always great to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership in the community, both at Aklamo, but there's so many things that you're involved with personally, I know. And I was in Lansdale the other day, I was visiting with Mano on Main Street, and I saw Aklamo is there and providing services in Lansdale now as well, would you admit? So I was glad to see that. But it's great to see you, and thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you so much. It is my pleasure. I really enjoy it, and I have an amazing team. I couldn't do this without them, those Unsong heroes that no one sees. Everybody sees my face and Nellie, but I have a lot of people behind me, the board, and of course, all of our donors and our supporters and our staff who work tirelessly. When Ida happened, what people don't know is that we were the next day, we were every day in the shelter, we were working with everybody in the community that needed, and we're still doing that, you know, working with the Ida survivors who are still struggling. So we're here to serve everybody in the community. And again, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Nellie, I'd like to thank you as well, and on a happy note, I believe Saturday, the 24th of September, there was a Hispanic Heritage Festival here in Norristown, and I heard a lot of positive feedback from community members that enjoyed it and had a good time. And I know you're very involved with organizing that.
Well, actually, that was with another group, but congratulations to them, they did good. No, I love that because normally it has been Aklamo, right? We are the full organization, like the biggest organization, the first organization, but there are other groups that are doing amazing work to help the Latino community, and I also commend them. So yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Dr. Wong with an update on vaccines and some other COVID info. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much, commissioners, for allowing me to be here today. My name is Alvin Wong. I have the privilege of serving as the chief medical officer and the regional EMS medical director for the Department of Public Safety. So today I wanted to talk about some updates to the COVID-19 BA5 subvariant and some of the bivalent boosters that are available. Next slide, please. So as we have heard throughout the years, the COVID-19 pandemic has led to numerous mutations in the virus which caused the disease, and we are currently facing increased rates of the Omicron variants as well as subvariants. And every time the virus mutates, there are chances for it to either hurt or help the virus in its ability to infect others. And unfortunately, the most recent mutations have actually led to an increase in transmissibility and infection rates of individuals from COVID-19. Next slide, please. So we see this clinically in individuals who recently have become more infected, or the risk of infection has increased, I should say, over the recent months with the increased prevalence of the Omicron variants. And despite the millions of vaccines that have been delivered and the individuals that have natural immunity against COVID because of a previous infection, we do see unfortunately this increase in infection rate. And what that means is that vaccines, it's not that vaccines are not effective, it actually just means that the virus has mutated in order to be able to escape our body's immune systems and the things that we do such as vaccination to help prevent the spread of the virus. And my next two slides are actually going to talk about some of those concepts. So when we look at the age-adjusted rates of COVID-19 hospitalizations, individuals who were unvaccinated actually had a 4.6x increase chance of hospitalization than those who at least got one booster dose. So again, being vaccinated significantly reduces your risk of hospitalization and reduces your risk of death, as we'll talk about in the next slide. So in the early part of 2022, with the initial presentation of the Omicron variant, we actually saw a 20-fold increase- saw a 20-fold increase in the risk of death from COVID-19 for individuals who were not vaccinated. And very fortunately, in recent months, we've seen that risk drop down to eight times greater for individuals not vaccinated versus individuals that at least had one booster dose. So unfortunately, we still have hundreds of Americans each day who pass away from COVID-19. And there's space for both aspects here. We can be thankful that our medical countermeasures are effective, and we can also pay respect to those who have lost a loved one due to COVID-19 and those who have lost their lives as well. So looking at some CDC data for our local community, we actually see that the Omicron BA4 and BA5 subvariants have actually become very, very prevalent in the infection rate that we see for individuals in our region. So here in southeast Pennsylvania, last month, about 90% of the COVID-19 infections were related to the BA5 subvariant. What does this mean in terms of our medical countermeasures? So in August, at the end of August, the FDA released bivalent, or authorized bivalent boosters from both Moderna and Pfizer, which were available for individuals over 18 for the Moderna vaccine or over age 12 for the Pfizer vaccine. And it's really just a single booster dose that's administered at least two months after having completed their primary vaccination series with any monovalent COVID-19 vaccine or received their most recent booster dose. So making it a little bit more simpler, let's just take a look at what's actually in these vaccines and the safety profile. So if I could have the next slide, please. So these new bivalent vaccines actually contain a mixture of what we call ancestral original COVID-19 spike proteins, as well as a mixture of some of the newer BA4, BA5 subvariant spike proteins as well. And so looking at all of the safety literature we've had here in the United States, there have been over 600 million mRNA vaccine doses that have been administered without significant adverse effects throughout the nation. These vaccines, these bivalent vaccines specifically, were authorized by the same processes and same regulations that led to the emergency use authorizations for the original monovalent COVID-19 mRNA vaccines and their ultimate approval as, or ultimate full approval as vaccines for human administration. This is the true benefit of the mRNA vaccine technology. It's the ability to rapidly change the formulation of the vaccine to match these new emerging variants to offer us the maximum protection possible. And this process is not unlike that which is used to modify the flu vaccine that's administered every year. And although flu and COVID are different viruses, the processes and the safety systems that are built in place are very similar. So in terms of recommendations from the public health perspective, with the new release of these bivalent vaccines, all of the booster recommendations have been simplified as well. And the recommendation really is that any individual who's had at least two months of labs between their primary series or their booster dose should get a bivalent booster. And again, these boosters are available for all those who are above age 12 for the Pfizer vaccine and above age 18 for the Moderna vaccine. We see that in this vaccination schedule on the next slide, which kind of just graphically demonstrates what I discussed. And there's also a couple other clarifications that have come out with these latest sets of recommendations. So on the next slide, we can actually see that getting all the vaccines that you're eligible for at the same time is a recommended practice. So getting the flu shot and the COVID vaccine at the same time is totally fine. And in fact, it's recommended to reduce the risk of serious illness, hospitalization, or even death. That being said, there's another clarification that comes out in that although previously there were some recommendations to stick with the Pfizer vaccine, if that's what you got, or the Moderna vaccine, if that's what you got for your booster, that recommendation is gone. And now the FDA has said that really we think of these Pfizer, Moderna vaccines as interchangeable. So the recommendation is to take whatever vaccine is most readily available to you and as soon as possible so that you can be maximally protected. A couple other key points on the next slide. If you are infected currently, you at least need to wait until you are recovered from the virus before getting your vaccine, right? Because it's not safe to be around others. You could potentially pass the infection to those who are giving you the vaccine. And if you've had a recent infection, after discussion with your primary care doctor, you may actually consider delaying the vaccination by up to three months. But there are many factors that should go into place, and that should be discussed with your primary care doctors. So for example, individuals who are at risk of severe disease, community levels being increased, or predominant characteristics of whatever strain happens to be coming out may change an individual's decision. So again, it's important for individuals to communicate with their primary care physicians to decide what is the best for them. Let me go to the next slide, please. So these bivalent boosters are available all throughout the office of public health clinics, as well as numerous pharmacies, doctor's offices throughout the county. And appointments are available for these OPH-run clinics online by calling 610-278-5117, or booking an appointment online at the COVID-19 website. If we can skip ahead to the next slide after this. For individuals who are strictly homebound, our Montgomery County Mobile Integrated Health Team is also able to come to your home to provide a COVID-19 vaccination or booster. An individual can arrange an appointment for that by calling 610-631-3079 and leaving a voicemail so that we can call you back and we will come to your house, and one of our DPS paramedics will administer that vaccine for you right near your home. So can we do the next slide, please? So I do want to put my contact information up here, and if I could just take a moment to express some personal thoughts. So as an emergency physician, we have had the privilege of caring for patients who struggle to afford and understand how to use their medications, the healthcare systems that they need, and have difficulties, in fact, in accessing some of the services that they need to remain healthy. And as a result of seeing these struggles every single time I and my fellow emergency physicians work in the hospital, we see that there are so many gaps that unfortunately patients can fall into due to the complexities of our healthcare system. And I understand that the role of all emergency physicians is really to provide scientifically factual information to help improve the health literacy of our residents so that they can remain healthy and reduce the likelihood of even needing to come to the emergency department at all in the first place. Having the privilege of being able to help these individuals is what enables emergency physicians to remain on the front line as advocates for health promotion and prevention. And to that extent, although my work with the county started back in 2014 in the domain of strengthening our county's EMS system, I personally am grateful for the myriad opportunities that have been given to my team and I over the past few years to collaborate on building our county's health systems of care to benefit some of our most vulnerable populations, particularly residents who struggle with substance use disorder, behavioral health challenges, health equity needs, and health literacy. And of course, building systems to support our efforts of our county's EMTs and paramedics, which comprise our county's EMS system. These opportunities that have been afforded to me continue to remain some of the most rewarding aspects of my professional career, and for that, I am very deeply appreciative of the county and these opportunities that have been given to me. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today, and thanks for your time.
Dr. Wong, thank you for that great update, and I just want to thank you for your leadership, particularly with our new community paramedic service. You and your team have been instrumental in making sure that homebound individuals could get vaccinated. And you've also done outreach to individuals who are currently unhoused and really made sure that we gave everyone who would like to be vaccinated the opportunity to do so. And I just want to underscore one thing that you said, because as I talk to people across our community, I know this is a point of confusion for a lot of people. What's important about the vaccine that's available today is that it is actually vaccinating us for the strains of COVID that are prevalent in our community right now. In fact, they're basically just about 100% of the strains of COVID that are in our community. This vaccine is matched to what's out there right now. The older vaccines did not have any Omicron in them. And so it's an opportunity to get vaccinated against what is currently circulating in our community right now.
Exactly.
Great.
Thank you for the update.
Okay. Thanks so much. Take care. So speaking of vaccines, it is time for our annual flu vaccine update and our annual opportunity to get vaccinated. So Dr. Lorraine, good morning and welcome. Actually, good afternoon. Sorry. Good afternoon and welcome.
Yes. Good afternoon, commissioners. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to be talking pretty much just about flu vaccine at this point, but I do want to address just a couple quick comments in amplification of my colleague, Dr. Wong's statements. The medical profession, for a very, very long time, has had very, very altruistic motives in most of its practitioners in that we are entrusted with the public care. And we find it a very serious and sacred duty to take scientific information and put that in an understandable form and utilize that for the best care of our patients. And we are advocates for our patients, and whether it's an emergency physician, or an internist, or hematologist, or an anesthesiologist, we all have been working together in extraordinary ways during the pandemic. We certainly have been doing that before as well, but there's been a flood of information out there. It's been very, very confusing to the public. And our role as physicians in practice and our role, Dr. Wong and I, as members of the county team, is assimilating that information and trying to put it in a form that people can understand, that people can use, and people can decide what, based on their own priorities, what is best for them. So that is our job. We take it seriously, and we think that we've done very well in getting that information out. And it's such an important part of what we do on a daily basis. Now, with that said, I am very, very grateful for the opportunity to only talk about flu since he did such a masterful job of talking about COVID. And flu, of course, this is an every-year thing. Next slide, please, Kelly. So who should get the flu vaccine? Well, the answer is everyone in your family who is six months and older. And the reason for that is that under six months, there isn't a very good response to the vaccine. As you'll see a little bit later, however, there is a way of protecting those little babies as well. Next, please. So what are the reasons why people should get a flu vaccine? Well, number one, it can prevent the flu. It may be a little bit strange for some people to understand, that actually isn't the primary reason that we immunize for flu. The primary reason is to prevent serious illness, but it's a great benefit when we can say, hey, it prevents the disease as well. Also, I'll mention, by the way, that most of this data is from a few years back because the last couple of years have been very anomalous when it comes to flu. Two years ago, in the height of the early days of the pandemic, we were taking some very extraordinary protective measures, and that really prevented flu. We had such a low number that we can't even use that as a statistical calculation. Last year, it went up a little bit, and by the way, this year, it's projected to go up even more. We base our projections on what we've seen in Australia, because that's six months ahead. They just came out of a very, very rough flu season. But we can see that the vaccination can prevent, you know, up to seven or eight million illnesses, about half that amount, roughly four million medical visits, over 100,000 influenza-related hospitalizations, and upwards of 6,000 deaths. So it really is very, very effective. Next, please. Now, most importantly, the flu vaccination has been shown in many, many studies to decrease the severity of illness in people who do get vaccinated but still come down with flu. They tend to have much less serious illness. The ICU admission rate is much lower. The time spent in the ICU is lower as well. And then deaths also are significantly lower. Next, please. So as I mentioned, flu vaccination can reduce the overall risk of hospitalization. And we have data from the most recent year of 2019 to, excuse me, 2020, that the flu vaccination prevented an estimated 105,000 flu-related hospitalizations. And in children also, this is very, very significant. We can prevent hospitalizations, we can prevent NICU admissions and pediatric ICU admissions. Next, please. People who have chronic health conditions are at much, much higher risk of complications of flu. So people who may have diabetes or chronic obstructive pulmonary disease are much, much more likely to get sick, much more likely to die. And studies have shown pretty conclusively that the risk of those complications can be significantly lowered by a flu immunization. Next, please. And this is what I was referring to before when I was talking about infants. So pregnant women, this is a group that actually is very strongly recommended to get a flu vaccine. The vaccination can reduce hospitalizations in pregnant women by up to 50%, very, very impressive. It is very safe. It's safe early in pregnancy. It's safe late in pregnancy. And those women who are immunized during pregnancy are giving passive antibodies to the child after delivery as well, which can protect them for the first six months of life. Next, please. Now, if you get immunized from flu, you're less likely to get sick, you're less likely to transmit that illness to other people. So if you're living with someone who's elderly, or if you have young children, or if you work in the healthcare professions and you see a lot of people who are sick, flu immunization will help to prevent you transmitting that illness to others. Very, very important to control that vector as well. Next, please. Now, despite the fact that we have this information, and we've been doing this for a very, very long time, each year, only about half of the people who are eligible for flu vaccination actually get it. There are hundreds of thousands of hospitalizations, tens of thousands of deaths that can be prevented if more people were immunized. Next, please. Well, along those lines, we are doing our best to try to help people get immunized. We're very fortunate. The infrastructure for immunization has increased dramatically in the past couple of years. We have pharmacies that are immunizing. We have medical offices that are immunizing, and we have community clinics. So here is the list of our Montgomery County Office of Public Health Clinics that we have scheduled for this flu season, and it's actually kicking off in about 13 minutes, I believe, in Pottstown, will be our first public flu clinic. And then there are other ones as well in Lansdale, Norristown, Abington, Upper Marion. And there are two that are scheduled at Montgomery County Community College. This Saturday, we have a drive-through that we will be doing. And then later on in the month, actually, beginning of November, there is an indoor event at Monco. With the exception of this drive-through clinic, all other clinics, we are also offering the bivalent COVID vaccine. You can get one or the other at those events.
Or both, right?
Or both.
Yeah.
Yes. And we do encourage, as Dr. Wong mentioned, we do encourage getting these vaccines together if you are eligible for them. They work very, very well. It has been appropriately studied. One of the things that's happened during the pandemic is we've developed a very, very strong partnership with the Montgomery County Immunization Coalition. And we've been working with them before, but we've now had the chance to work together on a lot of different programs. And Montgomery County Immunization Coalition is also supporting a number of community clinics, and their information is available on their website and ours as well. So we encourage people to take advantage of this, take advantage of the opportunities to be immunized at your physician's office, at your pharmacy. And remember that there's a whole lot that can be done to prevent flu. Next, please. So in conclusion, you know, the main things that we're looking at with flu vaccine is that it will shorten the length of a hospital stay, it will reduce the risk of ICU admission, and it reduces the risk of death from flu. So strongly encouraged, and we're making that as available as possible. And I thank you very much for the opportunity. And are we proceeding?
We're proceeding.
Okay.
Thanks, Dr. Lorraine. Appreciate the update.
So we have, we have two of our excellent public health nurses here, Kailin Roberts and Mira Singer, who will be administering flu vaccine.
Got a couple arms here, I think, that are willing.
And it really doesn't hurt that much.
Do whatever you need.
Put everything in the middle here. Here's your sanding time. Sorry. Need a box? We got the whole thing. How are you? Your vaccine information?
Yeah.
I am not unwell. Not unwell. I can go down my paperwork.
Okay.
Oh, good. That's right.
Yeah, I tried to worry.
Are you doing your left arm today?
Yeah. Always like a left.
She's going to do both.
Yeah.
Not my face.
I'm her assistant today.
Didn't even feel it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Stay focused on the arms.
Is that the average?
She's gonna do both.
Not my face.
I'm her assistant today. Didn't even feel it. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, Ken, I want you to hold your hand. Just a second.
I requested Al, but, you know, Mr.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
And thanks, Dr. Lawrence. Thank you, Dr. Wong. We really appreciate all your time today. All right. Here we go. Okay. Next up, Mr. France.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. I've got a few contracts to run through you today, and we'll start with our popular community planning assistance contracts. These are three-year contracts for municipalities in Montgomery County. We have one renewal for Red Hill Borough, and that contract runs from August 1st, 2022, to July 31st of 2025. The total amount of that contract is 70, or I'm sorry, $44,982. It is subsidized at 50%, so the municipality will pay $22,491 across the three years, and this will provide both updating their revitalization plan and planning support to their planning commission and any needed zoning or subdivision ordinance amendments. The second community contract is for Lower Gwinnett Township. Very excited about this one. It's the first time we've had a contract with Lower Gwinnett Township, and it will, or has initiated September 1st, 2022, running through August 31st, 2025. We'll be preparing a comprehensive plan, a whole new one, for that township over that time, and then begin implementation as well. The cost of that contract is $77,868, with the municipal contribution being $38,934. So we seek a commission approval for those.
Great. So I have two resolutions here in front of me. The first one is actually for Lower Gwinnett and Red Hill Borough, so we'll start with that one. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to approve the contracts for municipal planning assistance outlined by Mr. Scott France. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Oh, I see, you're addressing the next one next. Yeah, sorry, my mistake.
Got a few more. This next one is a short-term contract. It's for the school district, Cheltenham School District, and this is our enrollment projection study work that we've been doing since 2014. This is actually the third study that we've done for Cheltenham, so they have moved into second place on our return customers of this product. And we'll look at trends in what's happened over the last 10 years with enrollment, as well as with the population in Cheltenham. The total cost of this contract is $10,920. Short-term contracts are subsidized at 25%, so the district, school district contribution will be $8,190, and the length of contract will be from November 1st of this year to February 13th of 2023.
Great, thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to approve the short-term contract for community planning assistance outlined by Mr. Scott France. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, next, we have some DVR PC contracts.
Yes, three more contracts. These are a little different. They're essentially what we call pass-through funding through the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and they support transportation planning efforts at the regional level. They help pay for transportation staff at the county to participate in regional planning initiatives, like the Long Range Plan Update, the Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP, the congestion mitigation process update, and more. And they also pay for our staff to expand and maintain our county's GIS capabilities and to coordinate with our regional partners. These are annual contracts, and the amounts that are included in them this year are identical to the previous year. There are three programs. The first is the Supportive Regional Highway Planning Program at $141,700. The second is Transit Support Program at $77,400. And the third is the Regionwide Transportation GIS at $26,000. One final note on those, only the Transit Support Program, or TSP, does have a local match required. That local match is completely in in-kind services from the planning commission, so there's no cash outlay from the county. It's a 20% match plus additional supplemental study fees that have been added on for a total of $30,392 in in-kind services. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. France. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize Montgomery County's chief operating officer to execute the fiscal year 2022 contracts totaling $275,492, of which the county is responsible for $30,392, as in-kind services, as an element of the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission Planning Work Program. Be it further resolved, that all cash reimbursements will be deposited within the county treasurer, with the county treasurer, to the credit of the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. France.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Janet Panning with an authorization to submit a Healthy Homes Production Grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Good morning, or afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners and members of the public. The Office of Public Health and the Office of Housing and Community Development request authorization to apply for $1 million in funding for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Healthy Homes Production Grant to reduce housing-related health and safety hazards in 50 units in Montgomery County. This grant builds on the partnerships that have been created by OPH and the Office of Housing and Community Development through a similar grant, the HUD-Led Paint Hazard Control Grant that was awarded in 2019. This grant will prioritize assisting families with children, families with adults age 62 and older, and families with a member with disabilities. Both privately owned, low-income rental or owner-occupied housing is eligible for this program. While the target area for this program will be the entire county, at least 50% or 25 units will be located in the 11 census tracts in the county identified as disadvantaged by the Federal Justice for 40 Initiative Screening Tool. Factors identified in that tool include health burdens related to the environment, particularly asthma, legacy pollution, and lack of sustainable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to submit a grant application to the Healthy Homes Program for an amount totaling $1 million and to commit to leverage $100,000 through appropriate sources. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Just, so, two quick questions. When you said 50 units, if we do get the grant, we'd be able to remediate 50 units?
Yes.
That's great. And then, what is the timeframe that we would hear?
Forty-two months. It would start in March.
But when will we hear about the grant? Do you have any, do you know?
I think within the next three months.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Good luck. All right, next, we have the Honorable Joseph P. Walsh joining us this afternoon to talk about the establishment of our Public Defender Advisory Board, and it is time now to appoint the members to that board. So, thank you for your service on the nominating committee, you and the team, and I look forward to hearing your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So because Pennsylvania is the only state in the country that provides no state funding for public defenders, it is the responsibility of Montgomery County to oversee and fund the services provided by the Montgomery County Office of the Public Defender. So to ensure the implementation of best practices, in 2020, the county contracted with Temple University to identify issues and provide guidance and recommendations with regard to the governance structure for the office within the existing legal framework. And as a result, a principal recommendation of Temple was the creation of an independent advisory board to the office of the, excuse me, to the Office of the Public Defender. And it was the thought of Temple that that advisory board would play a significant role in appointing a chief public defender for the county and provide advice and counsel regarding the operations, policy initiatives, and funding needs for the office. According to the Temple report, the advisory board would also identify opportunities to advance equity in the criminal justice system and ultimately serve as a resource for all attorneys in the county who have an indigent defense practice. As it relates to the makeup of the advisory board, Temple recommended that the board include a diverse group of people who are devoted to the continuous improvement of indigent defense representation, with the majority of the board members being licensed attorneys either practicing or living in Montgomery County, and also including a combination of community group representatives associated with organizations that related to social justice or criminal justice reform. It was also recommended that the board be made up with individuals who are either current or former clients of the county public defender's office and senior leaders working in areas of mental health, substance abuse, housing, domestic violence, or veterans affairs. Temple also provided guidance on how members of the advisory board should be selected. The report recommended that the county form a nominating committee whose independent responsibility would be to solicit, interview, review, and recommend individuals to serve on the advisory board. So in early 2020, a nominating committee was formed, and over many months, the extremely dedicated members of the nominating committee worked really, really hard to develop its own operational structure, establish criteria, and the selection process, and to ultimately select and recommend individuals to you for appointment to the advisory board. And here to speak more in detail about the work of the nominating committee is the Honorable Joseph P. Walsh. He was a member of the committee.
Montgomery, thank you so much for your fantastic support to this group. I know you have been deeply, deeply involved, and we're really grateful for everything that you've done.
Yeah, Vaughn's been fantastic, and we could not have done it without her, trust me. So on behalf of the nominating committee, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for embracing the best practices that were set forth in the Scheller Report. I'd also like to thank my fellow committee members. We had Keir Bradford-Grey, I think everyone knows Keir, she was the chief public defender here in Montgomery County. For several years, she was the chief public defender down in the Defenders Association for Philadelphia County, and she was instrumental on our panel. We had Anna Durbin, who's a criminal defense attorney from Lower Marion Township, practices a lot in the criminal defense field here in Montgomery County, is very active in the Bar Association's Criminal Defense Committee, I know. We had Dea Gerard May, who's involved with the NAACP and the Ambler. We had Dr. Vernon Ross, who's the Director of Inclusion and Diversity at SAC, and of course, myself. We were put together by you back in, I think, March of this year. We started our meetings in April. We worked through August. During that timeframe, we received over 30 applications for positions on the advisory board. We interviewed 20 individuals by way of Zoom, and then we pared that down to 14 individuals, which we have presented to the Board of Commissioners for your ultimate consideration for the advisory board. I have to tell you, I mean, we worked a lot of hours, a lot of these interviews were done late in the afternoon into the early evening. Vaughn was there by our side the entire time, she set everything up, she kept us on task, she kept us on time. All of the interviews were a half hour in length. We had standard stock questions for each of the candidates, so that we would have a consistency in how we interviewed these various individuals. And it also helped us as a committee, if a committee member could not make a particular interview, we had the ability, because Vaughn taped them, to go back and look at the tapes. And I know that the tapes were available as well to the commissioners for review as well. So we were finally able, you know, to pare it down about 14 individuals. It was an abundance of riches that we had. We had a lot of people that reached out with amazing qualifications that want to be a part of this process. With that, in terms of what the committee saw as the duties of this advisory board, we had broken this down, and we explained this to each of the candidates at the outset of each of the interviews. The advisory board will screen, interview, and recommend candidates for the position of chief public defender to the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, following county equal opportunity hiring practices. They're going to be charged with recommending removal of the chief public defender if necessary, and if so guided. Support the successful operation of the Office of Public Defender. They should provide input on policy priorities, legislation that impact the Justice Center, improve equality in the criminal justice system, and identify areas of advocacy on local, state, and federal policy. And as Vaughn touched on, the Scheller Report indicated that we should have a diverse representative body on the advisory board, and we tried to break it down into categories. So we had a former system user that was put forth as a candidate, attorneys, there were several attorneys that applied, community affinity group members, and also those involved in leadership of nonprofits that deal with mental health, that deal with domestic violence and all those things that sort of hit the intersection of the public defender's office. So with that, we submitted our list. We thank you again for embracing the best practices. We wish you well in your decision. We wish the advisory board well in its charged duties, which are, you know, very, very significant for this county. And as they say in the Bible, let justice flow like a muddy river. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, Judge Walsh and Ms. Montgomery, and, you know, I just, we've talked about this many times, but every person has the right to a robust defense, regardless of their ability to pay. And so it is so important that our public defender's office has the resources that they need and the support that they need to carry out that most important duty. So I just want to thank you and all the members of this nominating committee for this service. It was a considerable amount of time. I also just want to note, for transparency, that everyone who served on the nominating committee did so with the understanding that they would not be eligible then to serve on the advisory board. So people made that decision before they agreed to serve on the nominating committee. We thought that was a very important part of the process as well. And it was, I know, I can only speak for myself, but it was a tough decision to narrow down the list of 14 to the nine that we are ultimately recommending here. But again, thank you, and I'm very, very excited to see the next steps as we roll this out.
Thank you.
All right, let me get a motion on the floor. Yeah, sorry, I realize I have, just hold that thought, and let me get this motion on the floor. So I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby establish the Montgomery County Office of the Public Defender Advisory Board. Be it further resolved, that the following members are appointed to the Montgomery County Office of the Public Defender Advisory Board to serve terms as outlined in Exhibit A. Maria Mineos, Jeff Abramowitz, Eddie Graham, Katie Dally, Jeffrey Hood, Emmett Madden, Emily Rich, Bernadine Ahonkai, and Paul Heaton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. All right, sorry, Commissioner.
Ms. Montgomery, thank you for your leadership in keeping the nominating committee together. I know you had some strong personalities there.
It was not me.
And Judge Walsh, I know there were some weekend interviews too, right? I believe there was a.
Weekend interviews, and we set aside the Saturday morning, and we met Saturday morning to give through all these different group breaks that we had created, so. And some Friday night meetings, flipped my happy hours a little bit. My wife and I like to go out early on happy hours, so.
Well, I thank you personally for your service, and I'll be reaching out to the other members as well, but thank you, you all did a wonderful job. I'm glad to see this coming to culmination and looking forward to the board getting active.
Thank you.
I appreciate the effort put into all this, and I hope there is success.
Weekend interviews, and then we, we set aside the Saturday morning, and we, we met Saturday morning to give through all these different group breaks that we had created. So, and some Friday night meetings. Creeped my happy hours a little bit. My wife and I like to go out early on happy hours.
Well, I thank you personally for your service, and I'll be reaching out to the other members as well. But thank you. You all did a wonderful job. I'm glad to see this coming to culmination and looking forward to the board getting active.
Thank you.
I appreciate the effort put into all this, and I hope there is success and productivity with the advisory board, and look forward to hearing from the committee.
Thank you.
All right, well, there's no further comments, and we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries.
Do I have permission to hire Vaughn?
No. No, you do have permission to disband the nominee.
So disband.
Great care.
Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Stein, designation of the Lansdale Borough Police Department as a member of the countywide booking center community.
Yes, thank you. We have a request came over from the Criminal Justice Advisory Board. We're seeking to make Lansdale Police Department a member of the booking center family. CJAB previously adopted the countywide booking center plan. Cowamenson Township was approved previously. They are now actually transferring their equipment to Lansdale, who will take their place, and this was approved by CJAB.
All right, I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve Lansdale Borough Police Department to be designated as an official county booking center, subject to the fulfillment of all terms set forth in Montgomery County's countywide booking center plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, Mr. Stein, we have approval of an amendment to the public comment guidelines.
Yes, thank you very much. As we have seen an uptick in interest in our regular meetings, we have also seen an increase in public comments received. Unlike a large number of other county and municipal boards, Montgomery County does not put an overall time limit on the amount of time people can make public comments, as evidenced by the fact that our past few public comment periods have run over an hour. Because the commissioners desire to permit the maximum number of people to exercise the legal right to participate in government, our public comment guidelines are intended to streamline the process so long as the requirements don't violate the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, which governs how public meetings are run. The language of the Sunshine Act is clear that the public has a right to speak at public meetings, but the courts have recognized that these meetings are a limited public forum, and the Sunshine Act recognizes that these comments must be limited to matters of public concern, official action, or deliberation, which are, or which may come before the commissioners at a future meeting. And we actually have the language up there, so folks can see. The board or council of political subdivision shall provide a reasonable opportunity at each advertised regular meeting and advertised special meeting for residents of the political subdivision to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board prior to taking that official action. And subsequent court decisions have helped define this further, saying plainly, public bodies may confine their meetings to specified subject matter. Thus, matters presented at a citizen's forum may be limited to issues germane to the local government. And that's where we come up with the germane language that we use in our language. As such, Montgomery County, like all other governments, provides two separate opportunities for people to be heard, one on items on the current agenda, and one for items or issues which may come before the commissioners on an agenda in the future. This can include items which they may be called upon to vote, or which they have the legal authority to take action, or items that are brought up for discussion. In order to avoid unfortunate situations where it becomes necessary for us to interrupt folks who may be speaking in the inopportune time, we would like to make a further amendment to the guidelines in order to, one, have comments on specific agenda items. First, identify the item by number or subject matter. And then, two, comments during general public comment should identify the subject matter which they wish to address. In that way, we hope to avoid having to stop someone after, you know, 30 seconds and say, wait a second, you need to be speaking during the general public comment. In that way, hopefully, we can just streamline this process further, and then thus no one will be, feel the need to leave early, rather than stay and speak. The amendment would also formalize removal of language that we made back in February after, following a Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision. And so we did make, we removed the language to that point, but this would formalize that change as well.
Thank you. I will move that the public comment guidelines for the Board of Commissioners meetings be amended to reflect the version attached heretofore as Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. I do just want to note, Mr. Stein, something that you said, which is that I am aware that many counties in our Commonwealth actually have a time limit on public comment. We have chosen not to do that because we do think it's important that people have the opportunity to share their thoughts with us. But that does necessitate that we limit the time of each individual comment, just so that we can conduct county business in a timely fashion. So that is an approach that I certainly support, and that we don't put a limit on the, the total amount of time, but we do have to put a limit on each individual comment. Hopefully, these new recommendations of identifying which item on the agenda the constituent is speaking to, or in general public comment, the topic of their general public comment, again, just to help streamline and make sure that we are using the time as effectively as possible for everyone that has taken the time to come and join us at our public meetings. So I intend to support this.
I have comment as well. Mr. Lawrence, I'm sorry. I believe it's important to make sure there's not people, members of the public that come to our meetings and for, to disrupt the meeting and speak out of turn or yell from their seats. But when it comes to time limiting, the, this has evolved significantly since I first took office. When I first took office, there was no time limit on public comment, and actually, that took place at the end of our board meeting. That's now at the beginning of our meeting. And prior administrations, it was handled totally different. There was public comment allowed before the Board of Commissioners actually voted on resolutions and contracts before them. And due to the fact that our county is very large geographically, I recognize, as mentioned earlier, that it take, it can possibly take people over an hour to get to One Montgomery Plaza. And if they spend that time where they have to rearrange their work schedule, travel distance, deal with parking meters outside, to speak to the commissioners, if they require more than two minutes, I think that should be granted, and I don't want to put more restrictions on the public's comment. I heavily factor in their input when I make my decisions as their commissioner. So I would request a roll call vote.
All right, so I think we'll move to a vote then. Ms. Washington?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Ms. Pardue.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, October 5th, 2022, with a timestamp of 9:50 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve the October 6th, 2022 Personnel Presentation is Given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we will now move to advertisements of an ITO and RFPs. Ms. O'Malley.
Yes, we have an invitation to qualify on behalf of purchasing for flags. The successful responder will provide flags for Montgomery County and other counties with membership in the Southeastern Pennsylvania Counties Cooperative Purchasing Board. Contract will be awarded to multiple qualified responders. Two, an RFP on behalf of Commerce for Employment Consultants. The successful responders will provide supplemental workforce content to encourage participation and/or address significant barriers to continued programmatic success and employment. Contracts will be awarded to the highest rated responders. Three, an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for Home Ownership Counseling Services. The successful responder will provide home buyer education services. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Four, an RFP on behalf of the Planning Commission for a Trail Design Consultant. The successful responder will provide design and engineering services for Section C of the Cross County Trail East section. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Five, RFP on behalf of Recorder of Deeds for Index Verification Services. The successful responder will provide verification of accurate indexing information on recorded documents. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Six, an RFP on behalf of Supervision Services for Drug, Alcohol, and Mental Health Treatment Providers. The successful responder will provide a system for evaluation, referrals, and consultations for criminal justice clients. Contract be awarded to the highest rated responder. Seven, RFP on behalf of Information and Technology Solutions for the Justice Center Network, Wi-Fi Design and Installation. The successful responder will provide equipment, design, installation, and technology engineering services for the new Justice Center. Contract be awarded to the highest rated responder. All ITQs, RFPs, and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.mocopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding requests for the advertisement of an ITQ and RFPs, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have awards of contract award to the county.
Yes, one, contract award assets and infrastructure design services, Palway 5 LLC of Bethlehem, PA, $28,425. Contract provides restroom design services for Upper Spookel Valley Park. RFP 2243 was viewed by 35 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Two, contract award District Attorney data storage, Axon Enterprise Incorporated of Scottsdale, Arizona, $100,000. Contract provides the mitigation and migration to a new evidence storage system, which is required due to the current system being discontinued. Contract is for a five-year term. Three, contract award information and technology solutions software, Gimel LLC of Houston, Texas, $22,423.99. Contract provides for annual maintenance and support for the Gimel physical software used by the Archives facility. Software is proprietary. Four, contract award information and technology solutions, Wi-Fi upgrade, E Plus Technologies Incorporated of King of Prussia, PA, $3,586,121. Contract provides an upgrade to the county Wi-Fi infrastructure. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Five, contract award Health and Human Services screening services, Echoville Hospital of Echoville, PA, $420,000. Contract provides 24-hour screening assessment and a referral site for Montgomery County individuals in need of substance use treatment. RFP 2251 was viewed by 32 providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the RFP. Contract is for a period of three years, with each year not to exceed $140,000. Six, contract award public safety support services, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, $24,949.82. Contract provides a course switch service and support agreement for the 911 system. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Seven, contract award public safety consulting services, Johnson, Mearon, Thompson Incorporated of Hunt Valley, Maryland, $200,000. Contract provides phase four consulting services to complete the creation of a GIS database, which will include National Emergency Number Association compliant address points and street center lines, finalize the county's addressing guidelines and best practice document, and finalize the web tools used for address validation. RFP 2252 was viewed by 51 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Eight, contract award purchasing copy paper, WB Mason Incorporated of York, PA, $200,000. Contract provides for purchase copy paper for use by all county offices. Paper was competitively bid by Lehigh County on behalf of the Southeastern PA Counties Cooperative Purchasing Board. Contract is for the period of 10/1/2022 to 9/30/2023. Nine, contract renewal information and technology solutions, fiber connectivity, Crown Castle Fiber of Warrington, PA, $598,210. Contract provides support and maintenance for the county's dark fiber connectivity and ISP services as per RFP 1416. Renewal is the fourth available of five optional annual renewal terms. Ten, contract amendment assets and infrastructure construction, Loftus Construction Incorporated of Cinemis in New Jersey, $15,000. Contract provides for the superstructure replacement of Montgomery County Bridge Number 77, Plymouth Road over West Hickin Creek in Lower Guetta Township. Amendment provides reconfiguration and concrete anchors required due to shallow underground utility obstructions. Eleven, contract amendment assets and infrastructure construction inspection services, Noni Associates Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $12,000. Contract provides full-time onsite construction oversight and inspection during the replacement of county bridge number 77 located on Plymouth Road over West Hickin Creek in Lower Guetta Township. Amendment provides additional time required to evaluate the guide rail issue and three additional weeks required to complete the project. Twelve, contract amendment assets and infrastructure construction, Donald E. Resinger Incorporated of Westchester, PA, $73,934.39. Original contract provided for Phase 1 renovations to the Milk House Building at the Norristown Farm Park. Amendment provides the addition of a footer drain to the foundation, spray installation of cement coating for the foundation wall, additional steel and masonry repairs required to address the continued deterioration of the concrete and steel, and required revisions to the existing sump pump system. Thirteen, contract amendment information and technology solutions software, CDW Government LLC of Vernon Hills, Illinois, $1,250. Original contract provided for Palo Alto Firewall Maintenance and Support Services. Amendment provides for license coverage gap to allow for the co-termining of all current licenses. Fourteen, contract amendment information and technology solutions, system upgrade, Integrated Security Systems of Harleysville, PA, $9,604. Original contract provided for a countywide security card reader system upgrade. Amendment provides for an upgrade to the Genetek system from professional to enterprise, as the maximum number of card readers for the professional level has been exceeded. Fifteen, contract amendment public safety vehicle, Glick Fire Equipment Company of Burton Hand, PA, $57,500.53. Original contract was for a field communications vehicle. Excuse me, just one moment. Which provided, again, the original contract was for a field communications vehicle, which provided onsite communications and command support for large and small-scale incidents. Amendment provides for necessary changes to the body, chassis, scene lighting modifications, the siren and emergency lighting systems. Sixteen, fourteen contract renewals and one amendment for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and at the back of the room.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have awards of contract for assets and infrastructure, major construction projects.
Yes, one, contract amendment, security system update, Integrated Security Systems of Harleysville, PA, $1,418.72. Original contract provided for the installation of a security access control panel to the newly built electrical rooms in One Montgomery Plaza. Amendment provides for an electric latch retraction to replace mag locks on the 10th floor electric room door to complete the project.
Okay, thank you. I will move to approve the preceding award of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have an award of contract under emergency procurement for Hurricane Ida.
Yes, one, response services asset and infrastructure, Keeler Service Center of Telford, PA, $36,997. Contract provides for emergency installation of a central boiler, which was required due to the relocation of the Green Lane Park Maintenance Facility that was lost in Hurricane Ida to a building that did not have a heat source.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding award of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And finally, we have awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
Yes, one, contract award equipment, CDW Government LLC of Vernon Hills, Illinois, $125,183.96. Contract provides replacement modems for Montgomery County EMS vehicles. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award catering services, Upper Dublin Township of Fort Washington, PA, $25,000. Contract provides catering services for the 2022 Emergency Disaster Incident Training Symposium held in Montgomery County, hosted by Eastern Montgomery County Emergency Management Group, a division of Upper Dublin Township. Approximately 300 regional emergency management professionals, police, fire, EMS, health, and school officials, and first responders attended the two-day conference. Three, contract award vehicle, Maguire's Ford of Hershey Incorporated of Palmyra, Pennsylvania, $51,617. Contract provides for one 2022 F-150 four-by-four Super Crew cab truck from Montgomery County to transport decontamination equipment to incidences within the region. Vehicle is available through a PA CoStarz contract.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Any closing commissioner comments? Okay, then I'll announce that we have an election board meeting immediately following this commissioners meeting, and our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be October the 20th, 2022. I will move to adjourn the October 6th, 2022. I will move to adjourn the October 6th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. And I will move to Salary Board and invite the Controller to the dais. Good afternoon. Ms. CoFrenzis, good, we have any public comment on Salary Board? We do not, okay. Ms. Pardue.
Good afternoon, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, October 5th, 2022, with a timestamp of 9:50 a.m. Of note, we have three retirees. Linda Bucci from adult probation after seven years. Diane Rehor from assets and infrastructure after twenty-three years. And Patricia Barnes from courts after sixteen years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to provide, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve the October 6th, 2022 Salary Board presentation is given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So moved.
Move by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn the October 6th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Lawrence, second. Second by Controller Sanchez, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned, and we will move to Election Board.
All right, I am calling to order the October 6th Election Board meeting, noting the presence of all three members. Do we have any Election Board comments?
Not.
That's from them. But we have no comments from the public. All right, I will make a motion to approve the May 16th, 2022, and June 6th, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Election Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the vote. Is there any negative votes? All right, minutes are approved. And our sole agenda item is authorization of changes to polling locations. Ms. Sawyer.
I am here today to request the authorization for the relocation of twelve polling locations for the 2022 general election to take place on November 8th, 2022. The Board of Elections has given the authority by the election code to relocate polling places as they see fit, and today I am seeking the approval of the board to do just that. We'd like to move Abington 3-1 and 3-2. They currently vote at McKinley Elementary. We would like to return them to their original location of the Ukrainian Educational, Education and Cultural Center. Abington 7-1 currently is voting at the Noble Town Center. We'd like to return them to their original location of Rydal Park. Abington 12-1 and 12-2 currently vote at Abington Junior High School. We would like to return them to their original location of the New Life Presbyterian Church. Cheltenham 5-1 is at the Lamont Community Center. We would like to return them to their original location at Graz College. Franconia 6 and 7 have been voting at the Satterton Area School District Office. We would like to return them to their original location of the Peter Becker Community. Lower Marion 2-1 is currently at the St. Christopher's Church. We would like to return them to their original location of the Beth David Reform Congregation. Pottstown 7-2 has been at the Ricketts Community Center. This is our last of our return to original locations to put them back at the St. Jane's Lutheran Church. Satterton 1 is currently voting at the Zion Mennonite Church. They are no longer able to host the election. And we have found accommodations for them at the Indian Valley Boys and Girls Club at 115 Washington Avenue in Satterton, PA. Springfield 6-2 has been voting at St. Philip's in the Fields. They are no longer able to host the election, and we would like to move them to the First Presbyterian Church in Springfield, where they would be sharing that location with Springfield 6-1. That location is at 1710 Bethlehem Pike in Flower Town. Notice has been posted at these locations that the polls are being moved as is required by law. All of the locations have been notified of the move. We have notified and worked with representatives from the local Republican and Democratic Committee. And in addition to these, to notice being posted, every voter in these precincts will be mailed a new voter ID card indicating the location change and identifying the new polling location. These voter ID cards, if approved, can go out as early as tomorrow, and I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you may have regarding these moves.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sawyer. I'll make a motion to approve the relocation of the twelve polling places named on the attached document titled, "October 6th, 2022 Polling Place Relocations", beginning with the November 8th, 2022 general election and continuing for all elections going forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arkush. Is there any board comments or questions?
Ms. Sawyer, maybe you said this and I missed it. Were these all polling locations that had been moved due to COVID concerns?
Yes.
Now they're moving back to where they were before COVID.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And you did mention, because I was listening, but just you can say again, you've notified and worked with both of the local parties.
Correct, yep. Both parties have been notified and actually helped us identify some of their newer locations.
Sometimes they say they haven't.
Yes.
Afterwards, when we know that they have, but let's go. Commissioner?
No.
Okay. With no more questions or comments, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? All right, are there any closing board comments? Kelly says no, so we will move on to adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn the October 6th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Elections. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Move on to the vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned.